We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis.
Here.
Councilmember Ali.
Here.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Grab.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
And Councilmember Ruck Regal. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-48, which continues to limit any gatherings of more than 50 people, and Executive Order 2020-44 requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings, and the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons, City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the council meeting on September 8th, 2020 while complying with the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be conducted in person with members of the council president and council chambers with plexiglass barriers, with department heads in their offices, and some city staff in Room 404 with the ability to remotely answer questions while maintaining a six-foot distance. Fifteen members of the public and one member of the media will be present inside chambers. Temperature screenings are required upon entry to City Hall, and face coverings are required while inside. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the livestream, YouTube, Television Channel 22, or through WCBU Radio. Submissions for public comment were received through the City Clerk's office. The agenda, minutes, and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city website. I would like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. of proclamations that we'll do at a distance. So I'd like to invite our friends from CWTC to center podium. Patty Gratton is here. She's the Executive Director of Community Workshop Training Center. We're here this evening to recognize CWCT, CWTC, for their 60th anniversary. Congratulations. Whereas in 2020, Community Workshop and Training Center, CWTC celebrates 60 years of service to adults with disabilities in the central Illinois area, providing them with the tools to live, work, and grow in our community. And whereas CWTC started with 13 consumers and one staff member when a group of parents realized that their adult children with disabilities had no continuing education or job skills training available to them, they moved to University Street, their current location, in 1977, and currently serve 450 individuals with a staff of 110. And whereas CWTC placed 60 consumers and community jobs last year and partnered with over 40 businesses to offer competitive job opportunities for adults with disabilities. For 60 years, CWTC has enjoyed a relationship with Caterpillar, employing 175 adults to work on these contracts, which adds up to a payroll of over $1 million annually. And whereas CWTC also operates 17 residential facilities in the central Illinois area with programs designed to achieve independence in a home environment. And whereas CWTC is a member of the Heart of Illinois United Way, Illinois Partners for Human Services, and Human Services Collaborative, and believes in giving back to the community by regularly volunteering at sites such as Luthy Botanical Gardens, CIRT, Sam's No Kill Shelter, and the Wildlife Prairie Park. And whereas CWTC is accredited by CARF International, an independent nonprofit accreditor of health and human services that focuses on quality and results. Now therefore, I, Jom Artis, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize and celebrate the 60th anniversary of CWTC in Peoria, Illinois.
So I just wanted to thank Mayor and the City Council for recognizing our 60th anniversary. Obviously, this will be an anniversary that we'll all remember, 2020, right? We can, definitely not the way we looked at celebrating it at the beginning of the year, but still, we feel like we are a great partner for the city and the central Illinois area, and we appreciate, most of you, if not all of you, have been in to visit our organization, know what we do, and we appreciate your support in supporting us in allowing our individuals to be independent and successful as they can be in the community. So thank you very much for recognizing our 60th anniversary, and maybe next year we'll have a 60th plus one to kind of celebrate it a little bit more. So thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Patty. Congratulations. Next, we'd like to invite Monica Shure, the Executive Director of the Midwest Food Bank, and Wayne Cannon, the Area Manager for PCCO, for Hunger Action Month. Good evening. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Illinois where 10.1% of people struggle with hunger and one out of eight children do not know where their next meal will come from. And whereas the City of Peoria is committed to working with Food Pantry Network, HOI, including Midwest Food Bank and the Peoria Area Food Bank, the latter a member of Feeding America, registered trademark, nationwide network of food banks, to educate people about the importance of food banks. And whereas more than 40,000 individuals in Peoria County rely on food provided by the members of the Midwest Food Bank and Peoria Area Food Bank annually, and 12,000 of those are children. And whereas, the members of Midwest Food Bank and Peoria Area Food Bank distributed more than 800,000 meals so far this year through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations. And whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to end hunger, one helping at a time. And whereas food banks across the country, including the members of the Food Pantry Network, HOI, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in our local community. Now therefore, I, Jom Artis, do hereby recognize September 2020 as Hunger Action Month in Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Midwest Food Bank, the Peoria Area Food Bank, as well as the Food Pantry Network, HOI, thank you so much, Mayor Artis, and this council for recognizing this very important social issue, even more so in this day and age, in this year of COVID. Thank you very much, and I want to encourage anybody if they do want to connect during this month to make a difference, to please go to the Food Pantry Network, HOI Facebook page where they'll get all the information of how they can help us collaboratively make a difference of hunger in our community.
I'd just like to thank you guys for allowing us to come and bring more awareness to this issue that over 50,000 folks in our community deal with food insecurities. And once again, this is Hunger Action Month. So the actions that we're asking you guys to take in our community to take is to volunteer, contact the pantries first to see what their needs are. And if their needs are volunteer, if their needs is more food donations, or if their need is resources, please help. But the first thing to do is contact the local pantry to see what their needs are and see how you can make a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular joint city council and town board meeting held on August 25th, 2020, and the special city council meeting held on September 1st, 2020 as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Are there any additions or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Yes, we have a township item first. 20-223 is a request from the town officials to approve the August 2020 actual expenditures and to approve the September 2020 anticipated expenditures for the town of the City of Peoria.
Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve his outline.
Motion to approve, seconded by Trustee Kelly. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 20-224 is a request for a sole source contract with Oakstar Consulting to lead concurrent ADSI implications of CAD and RMS upgrades for the dispatch and police organizations, support for the final phase implementation of Tyler, and planning with the IS team leaders in an amount not to exceed $50,000, which was included in the capital budget for computers and technology. 20-225 is a request to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Peoria and the County of Peoria for full-service animal control services at a rate of $2.20 per capita from July 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, $2.30 per capita for 2021, $2.40 per capita for 2022, and $2.50 per capita for 2023 and 2024. 20-215 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to tattoo, palmace, psychic, or medium or massage parlors, and that completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any items to remove from consent this evening? Or a motion to approve? A motion to approve, Councilman Euler, seconded, Councilmember Ali. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at first readings. 20-226 is a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to various text amendments.
Thank you. Director Black, are you in the staff room?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you. The item before you in this particular memo outlines various changes that we are recommending to the Unified Development Code, which contains the zoning ordinance for the City of Peoria. All of these changes are designed to simplify the development process, to make it easier for people to either start new businesses or expand existing businesses in town. They're also designed to reduce the cost, which can be a barrier for development, and then to overall simplify the understanding of the code. So just in summary, we have several regulatory reductions. One of them is that we're recommending that all variances go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The majority of variances currently go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. There are some that go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we feel that it would be simplification and easier for everyone to understand if all variances went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. For special use applications, which the City Council sees on quite a regular basis, currently there are required components of every special use application, including estimated traffic generation plans, economic, environmental, and public service statements. What we're recommending is that these no longer be required as part of a special use because frankly, they're not necessary for every special use, but we would retain the ability to ask for additional reports depending upon the special use. We're suggesting that two items that are currently in the Unified Development Code are removed entirely, as the Critical Traffic Management Area and Traffic Impact Analysis. Neither of these have been used for at least 20 years, and therefore, we think it's time for them to go. We are recommending the removal of the parking minimum within the form districts. As you know, the City Council several years ago, as one of the first communities in the country, actually removed the parking minimum for commercial districts. So the form districts are the only area in town that is not a residential area that still has a minimum parking requirement. We feel that after a few years of not having a minimum parking requirement in commercial districts, that removing this requirement in the form districts would be helpful. There's some changes to requirements for outdoor sight lighting. We are recommending under fee reduction that there's a reduction in our subdivision fees, and that there's an overall reduction in all of the zoning fees with the exception of when someone is asking for waivers or variances. At that point, we believe that the fees should remain as a goal to try and get people to follow the regulations that the City Council has approved. There's some changes for clarity within the ordinance that don't really change any regulations, that just adds more clarity. We are also recommending there's an expansion of use to allow vehicle parts and accessories, retail vehicle part sales, like an AutoZone, for example, within the C1 General Commercial District. This type of use has always been permitted in the C1 District and just was inadvertently left out when we combined the old zoning ordinance with the Land Development Code. We are also recommending that in the R4 Single Family District, which is generally south of War Memorial Drive, that duplexes as new construction be permitted by right as opposed to going through the subdivision process. And then finally, in another use change, we're recommending that certain uses are removed from the general frontage within the West Main Form District because they front onto residential properties. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Black? Councilmember Ali.
Thank you, Director Black. Thank you, Mayor. Director Black, were most of these changes driven by the COVID situation and lack of staffing, or were they, I'm just wondering how much business or public input drove some of these recommendations?
Thank you, Councilwoman. The majority of these changes were actually on our list that we developed probably two years ago of changes that we want to make to the development regulations, and we've been bringing these changes to the council in bits and parts over the last two years. The timing is coincidental, but we also felt that some of these changes, particularly in the reduction of the fees and the reduction of the required components of the special use application, were most appropriate right now as local businesses attempt to recover from COVID.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly.
Director Black, I just want to congratulate you on this most recent, certainly not the first, deregulation program that you have going on in your department. I think it's something that is not well-recognized, and you, I believe, should be commended for making, doing business in Peoria, Illinois, easier and not more difficult. I'll have another thing or two to say about your fees when that comes up, but I, for one, and I imagine most of the council, really appreciates the fact that we're making it, making things simpler for our citizens. Thank you very much, sir.
Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Black. I am pretty supportive of all of these. It's great to see you making these changes so things run smoother, more efficient, make things better for staff and our citizens. I do have a couple of questions. Well, one, too, I think it's a really good move to put the variances all back in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. That makes a lot of sense. One question I have is about allowing duplexes as a permitted use in the R4 zoning districts. Right now, are they allowed as a special use in R4?
Councilwoman, they are not. So the only, up until, so starting in 1931, when the city first adopted a zoning ordinance, up until about 1989, two-family construction was permitted within the R4 district, within what is now the R4 district. So the exclusive single-family use has really only been in place since about 1990. Right now, or for the past, since 1990, the only way to build a duplex in a single-family residential area of the city is to re-subdivide the parcel that the house, or the duplex, is going to be built upon. So it can be done, but it has to be done, and it can be done administratively, but the person who wants to do that has to hire a land surveyor to resurvey the property, do a subdivision for that individual parcel, and then put an exception on the subdivision parcel indicating that it's for a duplex. What I would like to make very clear is that this is designed to allow the new construction of duplexes. It is not designed, it would not permit someone taking an existing single-family house and creating two units within that house. And any duplex that is built would still have to meet all of the setback and density requirements of the R4 district. So if you think of a typical standard, original R4 parcel, that's maybe 30 feet wide and 100 feet deep, even if this is adopted by the City Council, a duplex could not be built upon that parcel because it simply wouldn't fit, and it wouldn't meet the density. But if someone was able to take two 30-foot vacant parcels and put them together, then at that point, they probably would be able to build a duplex. So I think what the attempt here is to allow for more variety of infill development, and what we've seen in other communities is that duplexes can actually be a good entry point for homeownership, where someone can build a duplex for less than two times the cost of an actual house, live in one half of it, and with the rent from the other unit, they're able to finance most of the mortgage on that property.
Okay, so right now, under our current code, which has been in existence, at least with regards to duplexes since 1980, or 1990, where are they permitted then? In what districts? If they're not allowed, if they're not permitted in single-family districts as new construction?
They're only allowed by right in multifamily districts right now.
Okay. That's the one part of the proposal that gives me a little pause, just from all my years working with neighborhoods, and even in the legal department, you know, 25 years ago, that I think I have some concern about allowing, permitting duplexes in all single-family districts. Now, I wouldn't be opposed to perhaps allowing them as a special use, and I'd like to see if we could get some input. I know Councilwoman Ali asked about any input that you got from the public, but I'd like to hear from some of our neighborhood advocates that live in our four districts about their thoughts on that part of the proposal.
Councilwoman, I would be happy to reach out to neighborhood groups within the districts that have R4 zoning, because it really is the first, second, and third council districts that have the majority of the R4 single-family district zoning, and see what the feedback is. And then when this item comes back to the council, I'd also be happy to bring some examples in terms of some layouts of typical lot size and what would be involved if someone actually wanted to construct a duplex.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Grab, next.
Director Black, on 6.4, the West Main Form District, are those the prohibited operations to the right in the big box, big rectangular box?
Councilman, those are the uses that we are recommending be prohibited.
Right, and this is the first reading?
Correct, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the first reading? If not, we accept a motion to receive and file, Councilman Seer, seconded, Councilman Kelly. I'm not seeing any further lights. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
20-227 is a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Code related to fees.
Director Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, in many ways, a companion piece to the previous item. These are a series of recommended changes that came through the City Construction Commission related to building permit fees. Again, the goal here is to simplify our fee structure and then to reduce the cost, particularly for smaller jobs, because with building safety, obviously with the emphasis on the word "safety," we want to make sure that property owners are not dissuaded from pulling a permit for the installation of a water heater or furnace or something else that can create some real challenges if it goes bad simply because of a permit fee. So the recommendation from the Construction Commission is to eliminate the current processing fee and plan review fee, and then increase the multiplier for residential permit fee slightly, but also eliminate any permit fee for residential jobs valued at $5,000 or less. So if someone comes in with an application and the work they're doing is less than $5,000, there would be no charge for that. They would still need to get a permit if a permit is necessary, but at zero charge. The construction permit, or the commercial permit fee would also increase slightly in order to balance out the removal of the processing and the plan review fee. Demolition permits right now are based upon a formula that looks at the frontage of a property. We're recommending that demolition permits just simply be a flat $50. The commission also is recommending that from now through June of next year, that any permits that are related to improvements that would mitigate COVID-19 be waived. This would typically be an upgrade of HVAC systems, or perhaps the installation of touch lights and doors, et cetera. And that is about it. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions.
Discussion questions for the director. Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Black, before I get to my regular comments, or Director Black, I'm sorry. On item number six, the COVID-related items, are you saying that there will be no permits or there will be no permit fees, or both?
There would be no permit fee. They would, they would still need to pull a permit, if, if a permit was required. If someone, I mean, for example, if someone is just changing out a lighting system or a door system, and they're not pulling any new electrical wires, then a permit would not be required. But if someone was rewiring a commercial structure in order to facilitate that, then, then a permit would be required.
Thank you, Director, for that. I would just like to relate a conversation I had with a person some years ago. They asked me, "What, what is the difference between a fee and a fine?" I said, "A fine is something that, where you charge people money to discourage them from doing something." So, what is a fee? Well, it sounds like its purpose is not the same, but its effect is the same. I'm very happy that we are cutting some of these miscellaneous fees. I think we should ultimately become maybe the first city anywhere. I know everybody does this. Everybody charges for this stuff. And what are we charging for? We're fining people for doing the very things we want them to do. It's backwards. So, someday, perhaps, this city can be a city that does not fine people for doing good things. Thank you. My soliloquy is over.
I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Black, along the same line as Councilman Kelly, what happened after someone decided to invest 10, 20, 30, what about amount of money into their homes or business for improvement? Can you talk to us about what's the process? And I'm talking about property taxes, so do you know where I'm going with this? Can you help me and all of us understand what happened after someone decided to make some improvement to their home?
Councilman, are you asking in terms of how improvement to a property would translate into a change in the property tax or the value of the property?
Yes, sir.
Well, I can tell you what I, what I understand. I think that's a question for the assessor rather, rather than I, but certain work to properties will increase the value of that property based upon a determination made by the assessor. And just, so, for example, if someone in a residential property, if they build an addition onto that house, then that would probably increase the value of the house and therefore would translate into a higher property tax bill. If it's work that's being done inside the house, you know, a new furnace to replace an old furnace, a water heater, rewiring the house, doing plumbing work within the house, then I don't believe that there would be a situation where work like that, which is typically more maintenance or updating, would result in any change to the, to the value of the property.
Just to make sure I understand, along the same line again here, my understanding is that some people will get like a credit, like a four-year credit, three-year credit, five-year credit, under property taxes before they have to pay on the new value. Am I correct or incorrect about assuming this?
Councilman, at this point, I'm well outside of my depth, but I'm happy when this item comes back to the council. I'm more than happy to have a conversation with the assessor between then and now and make sure that we have a full explanation of, of how that, how that process works.
Very much, sir. Thank you, Mr.
I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Director. I do have a question on the first page of the communication, if I could refer you to item number seven. "Work started without a permit will be charged triple the permit cost and increase from the current double fee." I'm relating that to residential improvements. If a person is doing work in their home and don't really realize that they need a permit, is there any opportunity for that, that fee to be waived? How would a person know what needs to be permitted or not? In these day and ages, people are doing more on their own, at their own homes, and I'm just wondering, are we going to penalize them for doing their own work, or is that if a contractor, a licensed contractor, comes out and does the work and they're supposed to know to get a permit? Can you clarify that for me, please?
Sure, Councilwoman. Great question. And, you know, we, currently, we can charge double permit fees and also issue tickets when work is done without a permit. It really is, to a great extent, up to the discretion of the, the building safety inspector, whether that ticket or the doubling of the fee actually takes place. If it's a contractor, particularly a contractor that does a lot of work in the city, and they did not pull a permit when they should have pulled a permit, then in most cases, there would be some type of, at least a warning, last chance warning. If it's a homeowner and we happen to come across the fact that they're doing some work in their property, then that's not something that would typically result in any type of finer fee. You know, one of the reasons that we wanted to, or the, one of the reasons that we're, we are recommending that no permit fee be charged for residential work with a value of less than $5,000 is so that we can make sure that, that that type of work, which is either typically done by smaller contractors or by the property owner themselves, is done correctly. We had a situation just last week where a contractor had gone into a house and done some electrical work and installed a new furnace, and the homeowner's daughter, the homeowner is elderly, the homeowner's daughter called us because she was concerned about the quality of the workmanship without really knowing what was wrong. She just had a sense something was wrong. And when one of the building safety inspectors went out there, they determined that the gas line had not been hooked up correctly to the furnace and that the electrical work was completely inadequate. So, in a situation like that, it would be that contractor that, that we would be pursuing.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this first reading? Okay, we have a motion to receive and file, Councilmember Moore, seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two-two-eight is a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 20, which is the chronic nuisance property in the Code, Chapter 17, Fair Housing Commission, and Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of the City of Peoria as part of its litigation settlement with Hope Fair Housing.
Thank you. Council Peterson, would you like to give us an overview of this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you all recall, a couple of weeks ago, you approved a settlement with Hope Fair Housing that had several components to it. One was a payment of funds to Hope Fair Housing that will be used to create tenant education materials. One was a reallocation of dollars to the city's rehousing funds, who are displaced for use by those tenants when they need it. And one of the components was an amendment to the city's nuisance ordinance. The version that you have in front of you is the same version that you've seen previously. A broad overview of the changes that you'll see in there are that this particular version clarifies that domestic violence or sexual assault cannot be used as a basis for action against the tenant if the tenant was a victim of one of those crimes. It clarifies that the city cannot use offenses that have not been used, that have not been proven, excuse me, as a basic for chronic nuisance. And in particular, our code has a section that allows noise to be used as a basis to declare a property a chronic nuisance. Now, there have to be several violations of that, but we did feel and we agreed with Hope that we thought, under revision, that those ordinances for noise should have to be proven, or at least have the opportunity by the tenant or the landlord to object to those before they can be used as a basis to declare that property a nuisance. The nuisance letters will be reviewed and approved by the legal department, and that's largely the protocol that we've had in the past. The tenants will be issued a copy of the nuisance letter. In the past, that only went to the actual landlord or property owner. The tenants are also going to be protected from retaliation if the police, or if the landlord would contact the police for assistance, or because that tenant then participated in some administrative proceedings. It will add a private right of action for the tenant if they believe they've been retaliated against, and then it will amend the duties of the Fair Housing Commission to ask that they do an annual review of this ordinance, as well as the enforcement statistics that the police department will provide. That's the broad overview. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Corporation Council on the first reading? Seeing none, a motion to receive and file, Councilmember Regenbach, seconded, Councilmember Moore. We do have a question here.
No, I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Regular Business, twenty-two-two-nine is a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Councilman Regenbach.
Move for approval is outlined.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Regan, or Ruckregel. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting, I asked city manager about expenses that were being expended and to get a report back. Do you have some information?
Thank you, Councilman. I don't have any this evening, and the finance director was on furlough today, so I will have that information for council tomorrow. We'll get that out to you.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with nine ayes, two noes, voting no, Councilmembers Grab and Montalongo. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two-thirty is a request, is a request to concur with a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt an ordinance, or the recommendation of the staff to deny the ordinance, approving a special use for a massage parlor for property at 4241 North Boulevard Avenue.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spoke with the petitioner over the weekend, and we would like to request a two-week deferral.
Okay. We have a motion to defer. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Moore. Discussion on the deferral? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Ali? Thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty-two-thirty-one is a request to discuss a fire protection and police protection tax, and there is a handout on your desk.
I'll kick this off to the city manager, who has a short PowerPoint, but after the discussions that we've had, going back really to April, about revenues, new revenues versus reductions in our workforce, the item of potential property taxes has been discussed many, many times, at a lot of different levels. So, the, the thought was to have a discussion tonight to potentially place an item on the ballot in February, to ask our citizens if they would be in favor of a property tax increase to support police, and then also a question if they would be willing to support additional property taxes to support fire. There is a little, a portion in this discussion regarding the, the fire and police pension funds. The intention of, at least the intention of my request was, was not to address that on a, as a ballot initiative, because we do have an opportunity to, to address that as it currently stands. So, again, the thought process is to have a discussion tonight, talk about whether or not that's something we would like to provide an opportunity for our citizens to weigh in on, and if that's the case, how we would like the language to read, to work, and then bring it back either at the next meeting, or we could do it in a month from now. I think we have until sometime in December, if I'm not mistaken. December 7th was the deadline to have it on the ballot on February 23rd. So, discussion purposes only tonight. We're not raising taxes. We're not, we're not talking about anything other than giving our constituents an opportunity to weigh in on how they would, how they would view that. So, with that said, I'll turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, to just walk through, I just have a few slides to, to just kind of frame up the discussion for everyone this evening, and as we move on, the, I wanted to kind of expand this to a larger discussion, to talk about some of the trends that the city has been facing, really going back over 20 years. And we've talked about this a little bit in the budget process. The city headcount, and this is a snapshot of four years. I didn't, I didn't want to put all 20 years on this, this chart, but it shows you what the city's headcount was in 2002, 2010, this year, 2020, and what it will be next year in 2021. Overall, we've seen significant reductions in the headcount of the city over the last 20 years. In 2002, the city's workforce was almost 900 employees. We had 298 people, employees in the police department, 216 employees in the fire department, 132 employees in public works, 104 employees in community development, and animal control, and building inspections, and inspection services, 48 employees at the emergency communications center, and 94 employees supporting the back office functions, either here at City Hall or in the municipal services building. Today, that number is, as we look at, at turning the corner and starting 2021, we will be at 605 employees. So, that's a reduction over that 20-year period of nearly 32% of our workforce. What it's meant is a 19% reduction in the police department, a 23% reduction in fire, a 39% reduction in public works, a 45% reduction in those employees here at City Hall and those that provide support to the line departments, a 27% reduction in the ECC, and a 71% reduction in community development. So, overall, if we were to staff those 287 positions that we've reduced since 2002 at just the average wage and the average benefit load, the city would need nearly $37 million more to fund those positions that are no longer part of the, the city's workforce. So, to just put that into perspective. So, this is a discussion about property taxes, and I just want to remind everyone, where does your property tax dollar go? The city receives 12% of every property tax bill that's paid inside the city of Peoria. The lion's share of funding for property tax dollars goes to fund schools, nearly 58%. 9% goes to the Park District, 9% goes to the county, 5% goes to the library, and then 7% goes to other taxing bodies. So, 12 cents out of every dollar in property taxes goes to the city of Peoria. Now, what do we do with that? We have several property tax levies that we utilize to fund our operations, and this chart shows you what those, where those city property tax dollars go. And you'll see that, that, beginning in 2008, this is a chart that runs from 2008 to 2019, you'll see that, that this is in millions of dollars. So, this is the amount of, of property tax dollars that we collect. Again, thinking about this in terms of roughly 12% of your property tax bill is a Again, thinking about this in terms of roughly 12% of your property tax bill is, beginning from 2008 to 2014, we were collecting anywhere from 18 and 1/2 to 19 million dollars in property taxes, and our rate was remaining constant. And the green shaded area is our pension contributions, and that's pension contributions for all of our employees. So that includes our police levy, our fire levy, it also includes our Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund levy, and our Social Security levy. So that includes all four property tax levies that we fund for our employees. The dark gray line that you see gets smaller and smaller and smaller, and actually in 2019 goes to zero, is the amount of money that we were contributing into the general fund. So those were dollars, property tax dollars, that we were levying, and that was money that was going to fund operations. You can see, over time, that number has shrunk to the point of where there's nothing that is being provided. Let me repeat that. There are no property tax dollars that you're levying that are supporting the general fund operations for public safety, for public works, for community development, or for City Hall. Zero. There's $3.3 million that is going to fund road construction. That was a policy initiative that the council made in 2015 to say, let's increase the property taxes by $3 million, some $2 million coming out of bonds, and then $2 million coming out of a direct, or $1.2 million, excuse me, coming out of a direct levy that would be utilized to help to pay for road construction. So what you see here is that nearly 85% of the city's property tax levy today is going to cover pension costs. So you're not levying property taxes to support operations. You're levying property taxes really to pay for pensions and roads at this point in time. And that was done specifically because council made the policy decisions over the years to keep the property tax rate constant and try and live within those levy operations. And at the very end, at the tail end, in 2018 and 2019, you can see that we're not increasing, and that's a reflection of our overall assessed value is actually declined, and so we're collecting less property tax dollars because our tax base has shrunk. And so that's another thing to point out, is that the tax base has shrunk. So under Illinois law, the council does have the ability to establish specific police protection property tax levies and fire protection property tax levies. Police and fire budgets, if we look at the general fund and just the operating portion of the general fund, the police budget amounts to $26.6 million, and the fire budget amounts to $19.8. That's the 2020 adopted numbers. That's not the reductions that were proposed or that were acted on by council to date. So while Illinois law allows cities to levy that property tax, you as the council have the authority to levy that property tax for police and property tax for fire specifically up to 7 and 1/2 cents per $100 of assessed value without a referendum. So you could do that today if you wanted to. One penny, just for everyone's education, one cent per $100 of assessed value generates $200,000 in property taxes. So each levy could generate $1.5 million right now without referendum. The issue is, if you want to go over and above that 7 and 1/2 cents, then it would require voter approval. So any increase in each one of these tax levies, I think the police levy has a ceiling of 60 cents, and the fire levy has, I think, a ceiling that's the same of 60 cents. So you could raise it potentially as high as 60 cents if you wanted to, but you would have to have the voters approving that referendum at that point in time. So before we jump into the portion of the discussion about whether or not you want to proceed with that, I wanted to just kind of talk again through the portion of public safety pensions and the challenges that we face here, so that council would just understood this. This is not part of the discussion about the overall levies, but it has an impact that I'll try and close with, so that you can see what we're talking about and why this has an impact on the general fund budget going forward. So who's responsible for public safety pensions? Well, the state of Illinois establishes the benefit levels for the employees. We have received numerous emails over the year, as we've talked about budgets, of people saying, well, what you need to do is you just need to shift your employees into a 401K and give them a defined contribution plan. That's not the city's choice. The city has no ability to shift any of our public employees into a defined contribution plan. We operate in Illinois under a defined benefit plan. That defined benefit plan has been established by the state of Illinois. They determine the contribution levels for the employees, which they have set for all of our employees, whether you're police officers, you're firefighters, or you're just a regular municipal employee. Those contribution levels by the employees are set. At the local level, for police and fire, there's pension boards that have been established. The state has determined the composition of those pension boards, and the state has said how those pension boards can invest their money. So even if the pension board wanted to take advantage of a really good stock market, they have limitations on how much they can contribute, which actually then inhibits the amount of their rate of return that they can generate, and that ultimately puts pressure on the taxpayer to have to fund that. The pension boards then will establish a targeted rate of return for the funds. They will hire investment fund managers. They will determine where those monies will be invested, because they're the fiduciaries that are responsible for oversight over those funds. They can make duty disability determinations that will have an impact on future payouts of the funds, and then they will hire an actuary that will then go out and determine and set the employer contribution levels. The employer contribution level is what, in the attached information we provided to you, that we provided to you a report from the Department of Insurance, as well as some letters from our pension boards. Under Illinois law, by the year 2040, our police and fire pensions need to be 90% funded. So one of the challenges that we have been working to try and get to that funding level is that we are working to try and put away money to get to that 90% level, because we have right now, between both funds, over $320 million of unfunded pension liabilities. So we have to make that up by the year 2040. We have been making the statutory required payments for that. It is then, anything over and above that would help to lower that contribution, just as anything that the pension board does by investing their money. If they get a higher rate of return, then that money lowers the amount of unfunded liabilities we have. If the stock market goes down and they don't meet their pension target, their fund investment target, we have to make up the difference as taxpayers by the city then increasing the contribution level. So the last piece is, who levies the taxes to collect the employer contribution? The city does that, and then ultimately, the taxpayer is responsible for making those payments. So this is a snapshot of the police and fire pension funds and the future obligations and contributions, going back, I took two years, I took 2010 and 2019, for a reason. I wanted to show you the growth in that pension contribution between 2010 and 2019, and then show you the growth as it goes from 2019 through 2023, because this has an impact on the general fund and how we're able to deliver services. So in 2010, there were $10.2 million we were contributing to police and fire pensions. 8.5 million of that came from property taxes, 1.7 million of that came from what is called the personal property replacement tax, or corporate income taxes, and there was nothing else that was required of that. By 2019, that number grew to $21.8 million. So we saw there an $11.6 million increase in just nine years in how much we have to contribute for public safety pensions. So as you look back at that growth in pension costs with our general fund contributions shrinking, that's the direct reflection that you're seeing, is that those dollars were shifted away from the general fund into supporting pension contributions. We levied $17 million in property taxes in 2019. We had $3.6 million of corporate income tax dollars, or personal property replacement tax dollars, that went towards pensions, and then there was the public safety pension fee of $1.2 million. So that made up all the contributions last year, and you'll see that there was no general fund transfer that was needed. Now let's look at 2020. In 2020, the contributions that are required for public safety pensions have grown from $21.8 million to $24.6 million. We levied $15 million in property taxes, specific to police and fire. We're still levying more as it goes towards IMRF and Social Security and Medicare. But then, we also had $4 million this year, we're going to contribute in public safety, or in personal property replacement tax, and $1.6 million in the public safety pension fee. But we're also going to have to transfer $4 million out of the general fund into making those contributions. And then that's going to grow to $5.2 million in 2021, $8.8 million in 2022, and then $10.6 million in 2023. By 2023, one out of every $9 that you collect in the general fund will be going to cover public safety pension costs, over and above the property tax levies that we're currently showing. This is what's driving us to cut services. This is the structural imbalance that we're facing. This is the challenge that, as we talk about cutting public safety services, or going back and cutting public work services, or cutting community development services, that we find ourselves in. So as we look at this, this is the essence of the problem that we face structurally from a financial perspective, can be seen right here, and this is what we need to be tackling, in some ways, working with the legislature to try and make changes to the system, but it's not going to be, we're still obligated over the next 20 years to get to that 90% target. And this is not, I want to say this too, I'm not trying to denigrate the work that our police officers and firefighters do, or this pension obligation that we have. We owe it to them. We have to make it. We have to make these contributions. But you have to understand that this is what's happening to the general fund from an operating perspective, is that we're cutting positions and cutting services in order to balance this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Additionally, I think it's important, we've talked about it here before, but for folks listening or watching, this is an item that the Illinois Municipal League statewide has taken up over the last several years, working diligently to try to get legislators in Springfield to have a realistic discussion on this item and how it's handcuffing us at the local level. I think we've seen minimal positive movement in that direction with the consolidation of the pensions, but the really heavy lifting needs to be done on the overall reform item, which, as the manager said, is not to take away. There's, we're not talking about taking away, we're talking about the reality that any of the communities in the state can afford to be at that funding level by 2040. But again, that's kind of separate. Manager put that in there just to, it's, the public is talking a lot about this, doesn't understand some of the details, the sheer fact that we don't negotiate this. When we negotiate contracts, this is something that is done in Springfield. We have the only requirement or the only ability that we have for input on this, and it's really not an opportunity to provide input, it's just the opportunity to make the payment. So that's what we have to do here at the local level. So back to the item at hand, it's as a discussion point, if the council would like to place an item on the spring ballot to allow our citizens an opportunity to voice their opinions on an increase in property taxes to support both police and fire. I have Councilman Kelly first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Manager, looking at this table, if this referendum would pass supposedly, and nobody leaves town, we'll get about $3 million more. Is that correct?
Well, no, you can, you as the council have the ability to establish a police levy and establish a fire levy, up to $3 million. I would say, if you're going to look at a referendum to put in front of the voters, you need to be looking at something that's above that 7 and 1/2 cent level, that would try and close this gap that you see here in some of these dollar amounts, whether that's, you want to put a referendum on the ballot for $4 million, or $5 million, or $6 million, split equally between police and fire. Those are policy questions for the council, I think, to debate and discuss.
Well, I think, following this plan, if you look at 2023, we're talking $10 million. Okay? So we ought to just ask the people to shell out ultimately $10 million, which is, as Everett Dirksen said, and now you're talking real money. Okay, let's go back a few pages. By the way, I appreciate the work you've done, even though I hope it's in vain, but anyway. Let's go back to this page, okay? Our, in 2009, we were getting about $20 million, 19.8 million, from real estate tax. And look at what the line was doing until we increased our taxes, our real estate taxes, and then look what the line has done since we have increased our real estate taxes. These numbers do not include inflation. The difference between what we were getting in '09 and what we got in 2019 is 1%. This is what we're doing to ourselves. Now, we can, and Mr. Mayor, I appreciate what you had to say as well, but I was in the investment business all my life. 25 years ago, I did police and fire pensions, and at that time, everybody was screaming and yelling about how this is untenable, but we don't do anything about it. We can't do Springfield's job, okay? If we keep going the way we're going, and we're out of money, well, we got to raise taxes. We're out of money, we have to lay off people. We're out of money, you know, we go back and forth. You know, in 25 years, we'll have six firefighters and four police officers and 300 people living in the city of Peoria. We must not keep doing the same things. These same things don't work. Now, we need to embark on a program of real growth. It's the only way out of this stuff. Springfield's not going to help us, okay? And the people of Peoria are smart. We want to raise their taxes? That's fine. They all have suitcases, and they've been exercising that option too much already. We're going to see our census numbers go down, I imagine. So what do we do? Let's just double down on the stuff we've done. It does not work. We've got to chart a different path so that we begin growing. We had a hint of it with Director Black's presentation. He's starting to break the rules on what cities do. He's starting to cut regulations, he's starting to simplify fees, not cutting them entirely, but, so, we can put this on the ballot or not, but all it represents is, we're going, folks, we're going to do more of what we've been doing for the last 30 years here, but this time, this time, it'll be different. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman, I just want to clarify, maybe not for you, but for the listening audience, is we're not telling them, or want them, to know that we're going to raise their taxes. That's the point of this. We're asking them. So in terms of our ability to do something different, that will be driven by the response, is my assumption, because whether people want to, right now, it's, everybody's got their own. Because whether people want to, right now, it's, everybody's got their own opinion of what that might be. And I think the opportunity to actually provide our constituents to tell us if that's what they want, is that how they want us to get there? And if the answer is yes, then we know. And if the answer is no, then we do have to do something different, but at least, we're providing the people that are going to foot the bill, the opportunity to tell us what they want, instead of assuming we already know.
Right. I understand that, and thank you. I understand that. What I'm saying is, why don't we start taking a different path here? If we ask the public if they want to raise their taxes, and they say yes, all they're doing is endorsing an already failed system. They elected us to lead, not to make all the decisions. I don't mind asking them anything, but to say, here's a proposal, let's keep doing what we're doing. Maybe they'll go along, and maybe they won't, but it seems to me that we all know, I mean, you look at these numbers out in 2025, we all know, this is just the beginning. You know, we need to look at this whole problem differently. That's what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely trust the people of this community.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Ali next.
Good morning, Mayor Artis. A couple of questions for Mr. Manager. Thank you for the presentation. On the, oh, this slide, yes. On this slide, can you describe what's included in general?
So, the general fund is our general operating budget. So, that includes our police department, our fire department, includes most of the public works department, it includes all of the offices that are here at City Hall, it includes our information technology department, and our emergency communication center. So, almost all of our employees are funded out of the general fund. That's where all of our tax dollars come in, whether that's sales taxes, state shared revenues, other local revenues. We were just talking earlier tonight about development fees. Those come into the general fund as part of our general operating revenues, and then that's where we make most of our expenses. So, it's the largest fund that we have. Nearly, this year, about $97 million budgeted in the general fund, some for operations and some to pay debt on the civic center, some to pay the contributions for public safety pensions. So, when we had more room in 10 or 12 years ago, 2008, 2009, we had more revenue that was going from property taxes to fund those operations. But the council, over the years, has made the policy decision not to raise the property tax rate, not to really increase the levy, to let it grow or shrink with the change in assessed value, and that's what you see there, is that that contribution to the general fund, excuse me, shrunk over time with that.
Within the general operations, there are IMRF employees, correct?
That's correct.
Police and fire employees.
Yes.
And it's the people that perform the work, that perform the services. So, I just think that it's a misnomer to say that property taxes don't support the general fund.
Well, what we're saying, there's direct levies that we utilize that go to pay for pension costs for those employees. But coupled this chart, coupled with the chart that was just in front of it that shows the change in headcount, is a reflection of the fact that we aren't generating the kind of revenue to be able to sustain the same level of operations that we have almost two decades ago.
I understand that, but I just, I disagree that property taxes are not supporting the general fund, because there's employees that perform those operations. So, I don't want to...
But there's no direct money that's going towards paying anyone's salaries with it. The money is going to pay the pension contributions that we make for those employees that are here.
Okay. Which supports their employment.
It, yes, it does.
To actually perform the work.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. And then, my next question is related to the timing of the proposed Police and Fire Protection Act. Was this kind of an afterthought? I mean, why is it presented now? Why wasn't it presented a couple of months ago or a month ago?
Well, I think that, from a timing perspective, you know, the conversation that we kind of followed through the budget led us to this point, where we could talk about what are some of the other options other than reductions in services, and this is one that we have. This is one of those other tools that we have in place, which we could utilize if the council desires. And so, I think that's where it led us from the conversations that we had beginning back in April, and working our way to this point today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Grab. Further discussion, questions, Councilman Grab. Councilmember Rigenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Manager, for putting this together, and I think this really is going to give us a whole other look at this discussion that we've been having. And I think probably, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Manager, but there's been a pretty consistent drumbeat from half of the council that property taxes are off limit, and there's been a drumbeat from another half that says, public safety is first and foremost what we need to be addressing. So, to me, as we've talked about getting meaningful public input from our constituents, when we're talking about town hall meetings, this could be the ultimate town hall meeting. It would actually allow the people who pay these obligations the chance to weigh in on it. So, I'm very intrigued. I think this is very early in the discussion, and we need to hear from all of us around the horseshoe, clearly, but I think this clearly would elevate the discussion, and if we make it a binding referendum, it would resolve that. So, you're not going to rely on me saying that I've heard from my constituents, and they don't want property taxes increased, or they don't want further cuts in public safety. We would have it on the record. Clearly, we've got a lot of emails, but I think when we get those emails, there's many things that cross our minds. It's like, I recognize some of the names sending me two or three emails, or even more than that. And how many of these people actually are my constituents, are our constituents, and how many of them live in the outlying areas of the county, perhaps? So, this would clarify that, in that it would, you have to be a citizen of Peoria to vote in the referendum, clearly. Town hall meetings are a great resource for us at so many levels, but I think we've all experienced those meetings, that the first person who stands up talks with the loudest voice, and oftentimes intimidates those who have differing points of view. So, while there's value in all of these forms of communication, they're also, they've all got flaws to them as well. So, I think we need to be cognizant of all of this going forward. And I could go off on a couple of these slides, particularly talking about the state's obligation and how they've created this mess, but I think those of you that are regular listeners to this have heard me do that in the past. None of us, and I think I can say that with 100% confidence, want to belittle the work and the dedication of our firefighters and police officers, and our public works, snow fighters, and our community development employees. These people are working harder than ever before, and there's 32% less of them than there was in the past. So, let's take this, and again, I'm talking hypothetically here, because this is our first chance to view this, I'm saying, let's take this, this is the ultimate town hall meeting, the ultimate roadshow, if you will, and let's ask the constituents what they want, that we can provide you this, and it will cost you that. And then, they'll be in the same seat that we're in here every Tuesday night, that we're voting on things, and they will give us that direction once and for all. It's perhaps not the way the founding fathers saw this democratic republic being formed, but I think that in certain cases, this offers a great, a great gauge of where the public is. So, I definitely want to hear more, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have concerns that Councilwoman Ali pointed out, that I don't understand why this is coming to us now, after we've been faced with this COVID budget deficits for six months. We've had ongoing budget discussions. I don't understand why we're talking about it now, after the council decided to decommission two fire engines and reduce and cut 22 firefighters and close two firehouses. This should have been brought to the table four months ago, five months ago. So, I'm very angry that we're getting this now. I think it is a worthwhile conversation to have. It's something, I mean, I think we're obligated to consider, because we can't, the numbers speak for themselves. We can't keep providing all the basic city services that we need to provide with the amount of taxes and the pension obligations that we have. So, I think we have to consider it, but I'm quite angry that we're considering it now, after we've made these terrible cuts and decimated our fire department. One question that I do have for the city manager, and it's with regards to the pension fund tax, if the city were to move forward with that or implement that, what happens if Springfield finally does come around and grant pension reform? Can we pull the tax back? Can it have a sunset clause?
So, are you talking about, to clarify, the fee, or are you talking about increase in the property tax levy for public safety pensions? Because if it's the fee, remember, that sunsets in 2021, and then, your property tax levy that you can levy for pensions, there is, there's no limit, and you can do that right now. There is no referendum for a public safety pension fee or a levy increase. That's what's, if that's what's required in order for you to make the contributions to meet that number, the council can do it. When that's been discussed previously with the council, there hasn't been any interest in increasing the rate to cover those increased pension contributions.
We could have, we could have it as an advisory referendum as well, couldn't we?
You, yes, you could have an advisory referendum about increasing taxes as well, property taxes as well. That is something you could do. That's a policy option for council to consider.
Okay, and if we wanted to do that and get it on the ballot in the spring, we would need to do so for that by December as well.
In December, yeah.
So, I guess I, I'm interested in exploring that. I think that makes sense if we, you know, these pension obligations are going through the roof, and I think that's worth, if we're going to take it to the voters, let's take that as well. So, I guess those are my initial thoughts. And I think that may be all the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
I appreciate, councilperson, the fact that you're very angry that we didn't make these, why we didn't ask for this four months ago, but four months ago, frankly, we were barely a month into all of the COVID damage control. We didn't know the extent of which that would have been. That wasn't even something that we were thinking was going to be this long. If you recall, we had a balanced budget this year, that we were putting money back into the reserves. So, to be very mad that we didn't do this in May, when we were a month into COVID, seems a little bit, just a little bit disingenuous, not to mention the fact that you or any other member could have made a motion during every one of those budget discussions to raise property taxes, and the motion never hit the floor. So, I appreciate the fact that you're mad and really angry, but you never brought anything forward to do this previously, and going back four months, we didn't know where we were going to be. The reason we're having the discussion now is because the manager is showing us the direction that this is going. It's going to have to be addressed every year going forward. So, we're giving, we're giving our constituents, hopefully, an opportunity at the next municipal election to give us their opinion on that. That's all it is. So, I just take a little bit of deference that you would allude that we didn't consider this earlier, when anytime you want to bring up a property tax increase, you could have done that, and I didn't hear it. I had Councilmember, oh, Legal wanted to say something first, council.
As you're discussing the matter, I just thought you may want to keep in mind that I believe the election code has a limit of three policy questions or public questions on each ballot.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen.
Just so, if I could respond, maybe this shouldn't have come forward in April, when we were first facing these deficits, but this could have come up before August or before our meeting last week. I wasn't aware that we had the ability to do this fire and police protection tax and have it be a referendum. If we would have voted on it by, or given direction by August, it would have been on the ballot this November. So, I, you know, I do take, disagree with, you know, the argument that you're making, and I think that this should have been brought to the table sooner, rather than at the time that it is being brought to us now. Thank you.
Thank you. And not to debate, just one-on-one here, councilmember, but if we, even if we didn't propose an opportunity for our citizens to vote on it, a motion still could have been made to raise property taxes at any point in time during that discussion, up to 7.5 cents, so that it wasn't something that we had our hands tied on. That motion could have been made at any time. I have Councilmember Grab next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to be argumentative, but going back to last spring, right after the pandemic hit, I believe we had recommendations from the administration to cut 27 police officers and close three firehouses, right?
We said if you were going to cut $10 million out of the budget, that was the, that would have been the recommendation to do that.
Then, there was a lot of juice behind that, until we had all the difficulties that affected our country, until we saw that the county board precipitously cut nearly $900,000 from their budget, affecting the sheriff's department and other departments, and having to restore part of that. So, I can see why you would be angry, and maybe more of the word frustrated, because that was the direction we were being led early on in the pandemic. And I did almost everything imaginable to stop that action because of the impact it would have on our city. Each of us here has a very difficult job. How many people will serve this city during a pandemic, Mayor? We're really, I mean, the revenues have fallen off the cliff. We're all struggling with this. We all want to avoid making these severe cuts, I think. I think it just depends on whether or not each of us really believes inside that we have too many firehouses. that we have too many firehouses, that we don't need them all. Because I've talked to some of you, and you believe that we could do just fine, having cut 44 firefighter positions in about two years, 44 unprecedented, and a while back, even entertaining the idea that you would cut 27 police officers, and having already cut public works to the bone to where it'll be very interesting what our response is after the first big storm. Public works is hurting. So, Manager, that's why I appreciate the fact that you've brought forth for us to see full dimension of the cuts that we have made through the years to balance our budgets. What, 300 positions?
About 287, yes.
287. For those people who believe that we have a fat government, like it's been on a diet for years, so what do we do about that? Do we continue to make the cuts that we've already made, which I believe disproportionately impact, although maybe not after what's happened in the neighborhoods north of Ward Drive, certainly impacts in a huge way our older neighborhoods, whether it's code enforcement, demolishing endangered structures, having enough police officers to actually do a patrol instead of being reactive when the bullets start to fly, being able to get our firefighters out, and then being able to dig out our neighborhoods when that first big storm hits or whenever any storm hits. So, I think I would like to take a look at these options, only if some other considerations are rejected by the council. And under the item coming up, COVID restructuring, Manager, he gave me about 90 minutes of his time today. And I'd like us to consider another scenario, another way of approaching this. And I'm doing it to see what all of you think. I do believe in collective intelligence. And perhaps there would be a time, Manager, when we would look at this approach, the fire and police protection districts, or what's the terminology there, taxing districts, a time that we would look at it. But I don't think it's this budget cycle. I just don't think it's this budget cycle. It could be a discussion for next year. So, there's method to why I am stating this. And I do have something I would like the manager to describe, unless the mayor absolutely wants to vote on this now, or the council members, I don't want to put it all on you, to hear what an alternative scenario might be to untie the Gordian knot, the Damoclean sword, which hangs over all of our heads and our residents if we don't get the budget right. So, those are my thoughts, and I'm looking forward to further discussion on a scenario that we've discussed earlier. And maybe you'll reject it out of hand, maybe you'll like it.
Okay. I had Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the question is, are we interested in finding out what the citizens of the City of Peoria are interested in doing? I think for myself, I can say the answer is yes. We are always interested in learning what the people who placed us here want us to do. Yes, we are here to lead, but we're not leading just ourselves. We're leading a whole group of people who voted for us. I will bring your attention back to the decision to retire those two engines. And at that time, I talked about Engine Four, based upon the fire chief's own document, and I hope you all had an opportunity to go and find this nearly 80, 100-page document entitled Peoria Fire Department Data Comparison. And you may recall that before the vote was taken, I had indicated that Engine Four receives the most incidents of fire calls in our entire city, the most. Yet somehow, we decided that's okay. We can get rid of that engine. We don't need it. And I'm still amazed that that vote was taken to remove Engine Four, that receives the most number of calls in the oldest part of our city with the oldest infrastructure. And so, am I interested in learning and hearing from those who are served by these decisions that we make? Yes, I definitely want to hear from you. And I think you want to tell us something. Many of you have emailed us and have already told us things. Some have texted. I recall even one text I received, I indicated, "I will forgive your language because I understand your frustration." So, if you're asking if I'm interested in hearing from the citizens of Peoria, absolutely. I hear from them every day. But if we need for them to go to the polls and tell us in no uncertain terms that they are, yes, willing to support a fund that will continue to pay pensions, or no, they're not, in which case, we will continue to cut our budget until there are no services available as best we can. I received an email from someone today who asked that I request that we find out how much is going to other things besides city-related costs. And we've gone there. The city manager outlined it today. We've cut everything. I mean, there's almost literally nothing left to cut. I was speaking to a City of Peoria employee today, who I was not, I knew that they were taking, were required to have furlough days, but this particular individual said that they are required to take 17 furlough days, and how it was going to be an impact on their budget for their household. And this is not because they wanted to, but because they have to. So, yes, we have City of Peoria employees, the manager talked about, I think it was the Finance Director, who's off today. It's not a paid day off. He's off today, and we said, "See you tomorrow, but we can't pay you today." So, yes, I want to hear more from all of our constituents about what they feel about what we're trying to do here, because without you, we wouldn't be here. So, keep telling us what you want us to hear. Keep writing, keep texting, keep showing up in the chambers, keep sending the notes to our clerks so we can hear from you. But yes, if it's up to me, I would love to hear this referendum on our ballot to find out what they want us to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Rock Regal next.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Manager, for putting this together. And I think, just like many of my councilpeople, that this is not new information for us, but I think seeing it again in a different format, in different language, again, just reiterates the situation which confronts us. When you hear an unfunded fire pension liability of $156 million that's in front of us, and an unfunded police liability of $172 million, we can look back, and I think it's important to look back to figure out how we got here. But around this council and with the citizens of Peoria, we've got to figure out what our next steps are. I appreciate the work that you put into your presentation as well, and I would ask for just a little bit more information. If I'm looking at 2008 to where we are now in 2019, 11 short years, we've had to pull 6.4 million basically out of the general fund, roughly, and that's had to been made up from somewhere. And we've seen over time that where we haven't had maybe a property tax increase, we've seen a lot of other taxes, fines, fees also go up. And I think that it would be good for the citizens of Peoria to understand what all those collective impacts have. Think of what Councilmember Kelly said today, and, you know, there's a lot of truth in it, and he has said that for many years that I've known him, that fines and fees both produce revenue, but they have different consequences, and they treat the person who's paying them very differently. It's great to say that, you know, we, this information, which is important to see, but I think that citizens also need to realize is that over this time, we've also dipped into their other pocketbook, because the sales tax has increasingly gone up. We're not the only ones. There are other entities out there as well. There have been other fees that we've had to put in. So, while we've seen this in front of us, and maybe, I would hate to say inaction, I think that we have maybe diverted our attention by maybe confusing a little bit, by adding a fee here, a tax there. Well, let's add a little bit of tax on to when you go through the drive-through. Well, restaurant sales tax aren't only for the person who's going out for their anniversary dinner. It's also for the working parent who has to go home and doesn't have time because they're working two jobs, because they've got to pay their property taxes. And so, they've got to run by and pick up something to feed their family so that they can spend a little quality time with their kids while they're going and juggling two jobs. It's about the person who wants to be able to go out and take their family for a little bit of entertainment to the theater and see a movie once every five or six months. And those also are out of the pocketbook of our citizens as well. I would be interested to see those increases that we have done since 2008. And over time, I've seen other entities, other government entities go for a referendum ballot. And what's interesting is you see the case both pro and con, and the public really gets an opportunity to weigh in. Some of them pass, some of them don't. But at the end of the day, the public gets probably the best chance to really vocalize. I, like many of my councilmembers here, have gotten emails and texts and phone calls on both sides of this issue. And I frankly want to keep continuing to hear from my constituents. But I wish that we could put this on the ballot quicker. I realize that there are some deadlines that we have to work in. But I think it's better for us to know this as soon as we can, and if this spring is the first opportunity for us to be able to get it on there, let's do that, because that also gives some very valid time for our citizens to be able to be involved and to be able to start to learn the information they do about such a question. I, for one, while I have not been supportive of a property tax increase, and I don't think that blibber's where, you know, it doesn't surprise anybody. And there are reasons for that. When I look at exactly what Councilman Kelly says, which is, how do we improve the economics here so people want to move here? And I think that jobs that we need here so that we can educate a workforce and be able to employ them, that actually will change the dynamics. But that being said, I think it's important for us to hear from our constituents. If they say they are for this, then that gives us a direction. I appreciate you putting this together. It's a long-winded way of saying thank you. I look forward to what the rest of my colleagues have to say, but if you can also supply that additional information, it'd be much appreciated.
I had Councilmember Montalongo next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My thoughts on this, I think it's a great idea to present, or a great idea to listen to our, listen to the opinions of our constituents and get a chance to communicate all this information to them. I think it's a bad idea to try and get this on a, on the primary where you don't have a lot of room to communicate all this great information that the city manager put together. And just as well, I think when you start reading this, I'm like, what are, you know, what is a vote going to go to? Is it going to bring back Engine 20 and Engine 4? I don't understand where, communicating exactly what this is going to be for to the voters when we all know that during the primary, we have very low turnout. Is this going to be mail-in votes as well? I don't even know what that is going to look like. I think what's often missed is, how the heck did we get here over this period of time? The amount of debt that has grown, how did we let that happen? I mean, there's a lot of detail that needs to be communicated. I think we could do a better job going to our constituents at meetings, and we could probably get this done in probably the next, I don't know, month to two-month period of time, having meetings right in our districts and hearing that feedback from our people. Overall, I think I'm with Councilman Kelly. An increase in taxes is the wrong way to take our people. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor Artis, and thank you for clarifying that this is a discussion session. I have more of my opinion that I would like to share with my colleagues, and in some cases, I hope that we can respectfully disagree. I'm concerned about the approach of a referendum. Personally, I think a referendum is DOA. I think it's dead on arrival. The other concern that I have is that we're parcelling off one group of our employees, public safety, police and fire, who already feel unappreciated, both groups. And we're actually putting them through a referendum. We're putting these individuals who protect and serve our community, we're putting them on the ballot. So, say we put them on the ballot through a referendum, and the people vote no to a police protection tax and a fire protection tax. Are the people telling them that they don't support them? What are they supposed to think about a no vote? If they vote no, is that telling us that we can go ahead and cut more police and fire? Is that the message that it's sending us? What message are we sending to our employees by breaking them off in this manner and putting them on a referendum ballot? I totally agree with you, Councilman Kelly, that we need a different approach. We can't tax our way out of this, this problem of unfunded pensions, but that's what we keep doing. And I agree that we need a Band-Aid right now. Maybe that Band-Aid is more lending on a temporary basis until we can work out the long-term solutions. But I am concerned that it's the wrong approach, and it sends the wrong message to our public safety employees as well as to the public. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I had Councilmember Oiler next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think if I've communicated one thing consistently during my time on this council, it's that I don't believe that a tax increase is a solution to any of our issues. And I have communicated multiple times during budget discussions that we are on a financial death spiral, and so, all of this information has been relatively consistent. Some of it may be escalated due to the COVID issues. Some of it may be escalated due to the COVID issues, but it's all been underlying structural problems that we have as a municipal body. The very idea of a tax increase makes me want to fall out of my chair because I know that we can't afford it, the citizens can't afford it, and it's not going to solve our problems. But I do think that we owe the citizens an opportunity to weigh in on this particular topic and tell us how they feel about where we go next. Because we, the only solutions here are cut, 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 or raise, raise, raise. And we're not fixing anything long-term the way that we're going. And the numbers are what they are. And so it's time, I guess, to put the topic on the table and let our constituents tell us how they feel about a tax increase and where it's going to go. I mean, I personally know how I feel. I'll vote once I go in the voting booth as a citizen of the city of Peoria and that's no tax increase. But I think that we should let our constituents weigh in on this subject and figure out where we go from here. Because especially during this budget discussion, which has gone even worse than prior budget discussions, we're heavy on no votes and light on alternative solutions other than criticism of those that put solutions on the floor and make the necessary decisions to figure out how we begin to close some of these gaps. I mean, we can't all just sit here and vote no forever and not do anything. And so I'm certainly open to hearing what some of those alternative ideas are that I haven't heard thus far. There hasn't been much input, though, on the amount. And I guess what I would say in terms of this is, you know, it's, if we're going to put this on the ballot, it needs to be a number that's worthwhile for the discussion and it needs to be a number that impacts this gap. Because right now, what we have faced is every year, it's cut an engine, cut two engines, decimate Public Works Department. We don't talk at all, it doesn't seem like, about that. And the extremely painful snow season I expect that we're going to have coming forward because of the cuts that have had to be made in that department. And I guess if we're going to put this in front of us, we need to make it a number that the public understands what they're voting for and a number that's going to close the gap. Because it doesn't do us any good to go to this extent and next year be facing the same discussion of are we going to go back to the voters again for another number? Are we going to get some more input? We need to get this right. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say that I agree 100% with Dr. Ali and her analysis of the situation. I think our, all 11 or 12 of our departments, their morale is just terrible. And some of it, I guess, it's really our fault here around the horseshoe for the way we were conducting ourselves and the language that we're using. We're always trying to point to somebody that it's going to be their fault, not their fault for here today. One year slide, Mr. Manager, the one before that one. There's another slide right there that offends me. You know, it says, who is responsible? When I read that slide, you know, I don't need to know who's responsible. I mean, I know example of the actuaries give us people that were in these chairs the last 25 years, two or three different numbers every year. And this body always selected, you know, the smaller not to be fully funded. It's always because we had some other project that seemed to be more important at the time. If we would have listened to the actuaries and fully funded every year, we would not be in a situation that we're in. And talking about referendum, I've been on this responsibility now for 40 months. Forty coffee with your councilmen, many, many, many homeowner association meetings. Not in my district, not one person in 40 months ever said, Dennis, you need to raise our fees and/or you need to raise our taxes. I mean, we've all been there, all the district councilmen. If you're active in your district, and I know we all are, I mean, we talk to our people all the time. And I think we know what they're saying. For me in the 5th District, here's what they've been telling me the last 40 months, okay? Five years ago, we had across-the-board raises in all kinds of taxes. The main one was the property taxes. Then since I've been in this chair, we had pension fee, stormwater utility fee, gasoline tax, the motor fuel tax, it's doubled last year. Sales tax has been going up. And here's what I'm talking to my constituent about next year in 2021. I fully expect to have a one-two punch from the state of Illinois through the flat tax and pension tax. Now, talking about consensus, or I'm sorry, not consensus, but it's census, in January, I can't wait to see our numbers and what it's going to be for the city and for the state when these things come along. Our manager talked about 2021, and nobody talks about it, it's just going to, 2021 is going to sneak on us. We're going to have a dollar raised in the stormwater utility fee. We're going to talk about this CSO. And now we're talking about possibly our fire and police protection tax. I don't know where we go. I don't know what we're trying to accomplish. I don't know if we're just trying to, to close our city hall or people just telling them to move out of the city of Peoria. I don't know what the goal is. But I'm, I'm not very positive about our near future. And that's what my people, my constituents from the 5th District are telling me. That's what we're talking about right there. And Mr. Manager, the last slide, we're talking about a million five per tax, right? For the fire and for police, possibly? Possibly, depending on what it would be. Without referendum, you could go up to a million and a half for each one of those. With referendum, you could go higher. Concern, when I look at the last one you're on, in 2021, $2 million in pension fee will disappear. One thing that my constituent concern about is there are so many fees and taxes. And it's, okay, why don't we just combine one? Okay, if you're trying to, enough people here think it's a good idea, which I don't, if people think it's a good idea to raise taxes or fees, why don't we just have one fee or one tax? So that at least people are not confused about what's going on. I mean, why don't you, again, I'm not for that. But if you're trying to raise $3 million, why don't you raise the pension fee from $2 million to $5 million? So people are not confused about raising taxes and raising fees and one come in, one disappearing. I think, I think we're confusing our constituent. Thank you, sir.
Just a couple of comments outside of just the introductory to why we ask this agenda to be placed on the ballot. First, the first thing that we all, we all recognize, and not to pass the buck, but probably the biggest challenge that Peoria has and every other community in this state has is that we're in Illinois. So I mean, I'm really sorry to say it, but we're not, we're not getting assistance on a lot of these things that are pushed down on us from Illinois, the state. So just as a reminder, and this is, we all have one 11th share of this, is that we, as a council, didn't come up with a different solution to how we were going to get through this dramatic impact that COVID has had on our budget this year. Again, we had a balanced budget. We were actually putting money back into reserves for this year. All economic indicators were on fire, no pun intended. It was Civic Center was tearing it up, hotels were doing great. All of our revenues were off the charts. And it was, it was really going to, it was supposed to be a good year. Nobody could expect this, but it happened. So we've been having these discussions since April. How do we, how do we get ourselves out of this? We didn't, we didn't know it was coming. What are we going to do? And we hear discussions about, well, we got to do things in a different way. There were a few ideas, I think. In general, we didn't hear a lot of ideas or how are we going to do things in a different way in the state of Illinois that are going to help us get out of 25, 35 million dollar plus deficit? We didn't come up with a solution. So I did get an email late this afternoon from someone who asked me to call that I didn't get to before the meeting, but I'm going to call tomorrow because they think they might have a way that we can get out of it. So I'm, I'm all ears, like I am when, when other people think that. I'm going to, I'm going to give them a call tomorrow and find out what it is. But in general, we can talk about doing it a different way. We know we need to do things differently, but we're not getting a lot of solid proposals out there of what doing it in a different way means. Just because we have, we're limited in a lot of ways. A lot of them because we're in the state of Illinois and it's not easy to attract new employers here. So we need to come up with another solution. And keep in mind that regardless of whether we end up putting this on the ballot in February of 2021, in another month, we're going to be starting the budget discussions that we'll have to have finished two months before that budget comes out. So these tough decisions and these, let's come up with new ideas, aren't over. We're going to be back in the same boat for 2021 in a month. So for everybody that really wants to do things different and really wants to have new ways of doing things, start, start doing the work because we're going to need it in a month. Because we're going to be right back where we just left. So this, my point is that we have, we do have very difficult decisions to make. Everybody around this horseshoe, and I've spoken with everybody, nobody was happy about the way that, that things transpired. Options were very, very limited. Keep in mind that while all these discussions have been going on since April and the discussions are going to continue going on for the end of the year, we're depleting our reserves every day. We're depleting our reserves. So we have to do something. It's not just pie in the sky. It's not just like, let's, let's have some fundraisers. It's real. It's very real. So I don't expect us to make a motion to put this on the February ballot tonight. That wasn't the reason. It was, it was to have this discussion, to get some feedback. Let's go out, if you want to have, if district council members want to have meetings in their districts and large members want to have meetings, I, that's, that's all good within the restrictions of what we can do. But I really believe at the end of the day that we need to have the discussion. I think we need to give our citizens that opportunity to express themselves. And after February of next year, at least we'll know if that's something that is going to be supported by our constituents or not. Maybe it will drive more people to vote. A council member, one of the council members mentioned it's municipal elections typically aren't seeing a large participation number. Maybe this will help that, which would be an unintended consequence, but it can't, there's not a negative to that. So maybe, I'm not seeing any more lights, I'm not saying the discussion's ended, but maybe we would just have an advisory motion to the manager that we would like to continue to get information on this item. And we can come back in a month or we have until this first part of December to do this. I hope we don't wait till the last minute, which sometimes we have a tendency to do. But maybe just come back in a month and in the meantime, get feedback from your constituents. We can fine tune this. We can ask the manager for more points of data that will help us make that discussion. Just because if there's not six votes to allow the discussion to continue, then we don't need to waste the manager and staff's time when there's a lot of other big issues that we're going to have to discuss as well.
Councilman Grab.
Well, for the life of me, I don't know why we didn't have six votes to have those town hall meetings I called for before we made the savage cuts. Now, and by the way, I'm happy, it looks like we're willing to engage on this. But I think there's another way of handling it. Mayor, as I look at this item right here, it's just basically an item to discuss it. And I think it was healthy to have the discussion tonight. But I think maybe under 21 to 5, we might consider another option. Whenever we get to that part.
It'll be right after this one.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Riegenbach.
I'll make a motion to direct the city manager to put a little more meat on the bones, if you will, and bring this back to us in 30 days for further discussion.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Is there discussion on that motion? Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Manager, while we're discussing this motion and as we move forward into, as the mayor indicated, we're going to be coming up in a month on the 2021 budget. Would it be possible with all the staff that you have to find out, is anybody in this, in the country doing this right? I can't imagine we're sitting here and we're so unique. I'd like to find out if there, maybe with the National League of Cities, we can inquire if there are other cities that are doing something different. And maybe it's working and we just don't know it.
We'll be happy to look.
I mean, I know it's going to, it's not something you're going to find out in a week or two. But perhaps, perhaps if we cast a wide net, maybe the Illinois Municipal League might be aware of somebody, some city somewhere in this country that is doing something different. And maybe that's something tangible we can bring back to the table. Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to second Councilman Moore's idea. And to go further, make sure that you, if you're going to do that, Mr. Manager, please make sure you checked with better cities as well. They typically have a different way of looking at things. They have several pieces out on what municipalities ought to be doing during the COVID crisis. And so I think that National League of Cities is okay, but they're pretty conventional. Better cities might also, if that, you put that on your agenda, we could talk about it or... Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at unfinished business. 20-125 is the request to approve the recommended 2021 budget restructuring as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And from our last discussion, we do have a motion that's still on the floor. There was a motion to freeze all capital expenditures that were unspent aside from the stormwater utility projects that had a dedicated funding source. And that had, the maker of the motion was Councilmember Euler and the secondary was Councilmember Riegenbach.
So the first, the first part of this item is to, that is technically where we are with the motion that was on the floor. And then we subsequently deferred it for a week so the manager could get us more information. So I will offer the floor first to the maker of the motion, Councilmember Euler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to amend my motion to make it a little more specific on what we're working on here and what does and doesn't need to be covered from a financial standpoint. So my amended motion would be to pay any outstanding invoices for work performed in the capital fund to date. Freeze all capital expenditures that were unspent with the exception of stormwater utility projects that had a dedicated funding source, design work on roadways and any grant funding that requires the city to meet its contractual obligations.
And is the secondary, the motion, the secondary motion is agreeable as amended? So that is the new motion on the floor. Discussion. Councilmember Ali.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Just wanted to hear from the city manager in terms of the impact that this would have in terms of your ability to conduct business.
So the, the impact is that you're really looking at about 110 days that we would be, in essence, freezing capital projects until we moved into the new year to just allow us to get through the end of this fiscal year, hanging on to as much cash as we possibly could. The, there are funds that are in our capital accounts that we know that we still have to settle up with some projects that we've been working on. know that we still have to settle up with some projects that we've been working on. Uh, there's also design work that's going on in some of our larger roads that, that we would wanna continue with, because we don't wanna delay the, the, the timing of those road projects as that moves forward. So, it's really, uh, where we would be looking at, um, equipment purchases, or we would be looking at, uh, facility-related work, freezing that for that, that 110-day period of time, uh, and then really starting back up in 2021 in earnest with those. That would mean, it, when we talk about freezing, we're not talking about sweeping a capital project or eliminating it. We're just literally talking about this as being a delay between now and the end of this year.
For you?
I, I think with, with the, the, the motion that's been made by, by Councilman Euler to clarify that, I think that, that, um, we should be okay, um, getting through the next 110 days.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I had Councilmember Grab next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Senator Urick, what impact, if any, would this have on, uh, the Western Avenue funding, and the state and Main Street funding?
Well, the, the, the funding Main Street, for example, um, it, it's probably more a function of when the state receives money in their capital budgets, that they're able to, to release those, that we'll see anything coming forward on Main Street, the riverfront, some of the, the road funding, smaller road projects that we've received. Uh, at least word that we are, are authorized for those projects to be dispersed from the state. Our projects that we have, where we have money that's set aside, um, this shouldn't affect the Western, because we're still in that design work and the, in the bidding process. Sheridan, we already have the, the, the arrangement that's, uh, been structured with, um, with ICCI in terms of payments being made at the first part of the year. Um, and then the, the other last large project we have would be Glen, and this shouldn't really affect Glen, because we're in the design phases there as well. So, and those, so we would proceed with that with all due course, that we would be moving down that path.
Is this, um, rather toothless motion, a feel-good motion?
No, I, I, I mean, if you look at the, at the projects that are in the report back, there's, um, there's millions of dollars that we're still talking about that are gonna be tied up in facilities and equipment and other places that we'll be holding off for 110 days, and then, you know, moving that to, to move forward with that at the beginning of the year. So, uh, this should have some real effect on us as we, we move ahead, um, in terms of saving some dollars in the, in this time.
I, I'm just, I'm gonna vote no until I see an itemized list of exactly what is going to be impacted. So, until I see that list from your office, I'm not signing off on it.
Okay.
Not sign off on it, because I don't know what I'm voting for. Uh, Councilor Euler, I always like to support you, but I just need to know what is it we're immobilizing here in terms of expenditures? And once I see that list, and if it's fairly innocuous, I'll sign off on it. That, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I had Councilmember Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, do you have an approximate number, uh, that this, that passage of this motion, uh, would, uh, gen- generate, if you will?
Well, it, just, just at least within the capital budget, we would be looking at, uh, somewhere in the area of the, the temporary freezing of, of almost, uh, $8 million that we would be holding off on, on doing that. So, um, that's just for the next 110 days. Some of that may not have been paid out. Some of it may not be paid just based upon when that project is, is scheduled for payment until 2021. This just means during this interim period, during this next 110 days, we wouldn't be moving forward with those projects.
You're, you're pretty comfortable with that number? You're pretty comfortable with that number? Uh, I don't wanna, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, both my colleagues, uh, asked, um, exactly what I was going to ask, in that, um, the motion is more specific, which is much appreciated, but those who are listening or watching have no idea what that means. And as Councilman Grab mentioned, I would love with a more specific motion now to vote in favor of this motion, but if I recall correctly, when I objected the last time, I objected because I didn't know what it meant specifically. Uh, yes, we have a page, two pages, three pages, four or five pages of very small type of things that are teed up, um, that total 15.4-something million dollars. And I'm glad to hear that 110 days did not equal 110 dollars, but you're saying that somewhere in that 15 million dollars, there may be about eight that we would hold off on. Well, I just would happen to like to know what part of that 15 million dollars we're talking about. We don't know. We don't want any unintended consequences that will cause our residents even more harm. And if we're going to, are we, are we holding off to sit on funds that come January 1, we're gonna write checks anyway?
In some cases, we might.
We might? Well, if we, if we're not, why do, are these things on the list to be funded anyway, if, if we're, if we're not gonna do some of these things? Let's, let's look at them now, and if there are some things that we say we don't need to do, let's cut them now. But specifically, I'd like to see a list much like what you have here, that says, "These are the exact things that we're going to hold off for, for the next 100 and probably 100 days by the time we come back." Short of knowing specifically what that is, I will not be voting on this motion in favor of this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Jensen next.
I think, I got my question answered already from somebody else's question. Thank you.
I had Councilmember Ruckregel next.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Manager, you're, how many times you probably have redone the budget since COVID started, but it's probably a daily thing that I'm, I guess you're looking at.
Very much.
Um, this are in fairly uncharted water, because when COVID started, I think we all thought three weeks, four weeks, we'd be out of this. Um, what optimism we could have had at that point, and if only that were to be so. And I think if there's one thing that this has taught us is we don't know exactly what we think we know, because as much as we would like to be able to control it here, and if, if this were, if the power to be able to control how the COVID, if it were gonna happen, were right around this council, I am sure that you would have 11 of the most dedicated people to make sure that this thing ends as, as quickly, and any ramifications. You've given us the best guess, and, and you update us every council meeting on kind of where we are. And I know that sometimes there's, there's some angst from where we started, but from looking back this spring and, and looking at a forecast back in December, it was probably pretty hard. And the closer we get to there, the little bit more clarity we, we get. But I'm also imagining that, again, those were best forecasts on your part, because a lot of things could happen in the meantime, correct?
That's correct.
And, so with that, I'm understanding that this is probably a way to conserve some cash, which is what households do whenever they have a little bit of unknown. And literally within a, a month, month and a half, we're gonna be talking about the next budget cycle. So, this is never really gonna go away. This is always gonna be part of the topic. What I'm hearing is, this action item in front of us tonight saves a little bit of cash so that we can actually maybe have a little bit more of an option to be able to talk about as we go into the second half of 2021 budget cycle, correct? Okay. And, you know, I, I think about whenever the budget cycles used to be every year, and so it would seem like that it was something that had the agenda's attention for over a quarter every year, and by going to the biannual budget, it was supposed to make that a little easier, because it was supposed to be halfway through, you're kind of doing some tweaks. Um, this obviously has changed that, and I would encourage, um, the fact that if we can save a little cash right now, and especially since it doesn't stop any projects, it keeps them, it keeps them live, it just slows it and, and gives us a little bit of a pause until we know what really lies in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilman Montalongo next.
Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate, uh, Councilman Euler's, uh, motion. Um, I, I still, I guess, somewhat of the same question that Councilman Ruckregel's bringing up here, too. Is this about cash flow that we're trying to solve here? Is this about trying to make our year less bad, um, from where we're at? Um, and at the same time, I mean, is, is this a budgetary thing, that we're just gonna try and push these projects off to next year? I'm, I'm just trying to understand what we're trying to accomplish financially here.
I think it really is more of a cash flow, and it's probably a question that may be directed more to, to, uh, Councilman Euler.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think what this really comes down to, at least in my mind, is, you know, I appreciate the concern over the list and specific projects and all those things, but, uh, regardless of what we narrow that specific list down to be, I think we still have the looming issue out there of the COVID test result cases continue to rise, and some areas are skyrocketing, and I think that we are on the verge of potentially, um, getting kicked back a phase if we continue on the trajectory that we're on, and then we will end up in a even more difficult financial position than we currently are. And we've been warned for many months now that later in the year, there's an expected resurgence that could potentially shut our economy down again, and I think that it would be really poor planning if we weren't wisely managing the cash until we get through the latter part of the year. And so, yes, there may be projects that get put on hold, that we go ahead and write the check for in January, but at least we may know in January what kind of, um, fall, winter COVID position that we're gonna be in, and what impact that has on our economy. So, uh, to me, this is very much about cash flow and our ability to remain solvent through the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo?
Yeah, um, and I appreciate that. I'm just wanting to hear from the city manager. Is this the cash flow, I guess, um, uh, answer to, to the problem, I guess, to, to do this? Is this what you're looking to have accomplished?
Well, if, if we were to exhaust all of the funds that we have authorized to be spent in both capital accounts, half of our remaining reserves would be exhausted. So, so if you look at it that way, um, this, this allows us to, to hold on to those reserves for this short period of time, to just kind of get us to the, to the end line of 2020, and then we can start up with 2021 again. So...
Projects that, the projects that will be stopped now are gonna be part of 2021 budget as we start to talk about them here?
They're not, they won't, you won't approve them as part of the 2021 budget, because you've already approved the projects. You've already approved the spending authority. Right now, what happens is that spending for these capital projects that go back to 2019, that money comes out of your reserves. So, that's why this is a cash flow thing.
Okay. Just making sure on that here. Um, it's the cash flow, and I'm sure it somewhat does impact not making this year go from really bad to worse. So, I guess it's, it's somewhat of a savings here on, on, on that part of it, too. So, um, thank you for, for clarifying that.
Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Manager, you indicated that potentially there could be some things that we don't have to do at all. So, let's look at the list. And, um, specifically, I'm looking at, uh, the pages are not numbered, but it's at the very top of the, the project name of this page, it says Glen Avenue Reconstruction. And I'm not looking at the Glen Avenue Reconstruction. I will direct your attention down over about 10 or 12 items to where it says copiers. Now, I don't wanna get into the nitpicky, uh, issue of this, because that's not my role, to micromanage the department. But you did mention that potentially there are some things that we don't have to get right now. And I wondered, um, what amount are we looking to spend if we put everything on hold, which I don't necessarily disagree with that, but I'm just trying to get a specific list. And so, would copiers be included in that thing that we would put on hold? And it looks like there was $8,000 that was going to be spent on copiers. Would that be one of the things that we would hold for 110 days?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something we could completely eliminate?
No.
Okay. And so...
I don't, I don't think I said that there's anything that, on this list right now, that we could eliminate. What I, what I said is that we could hold off until the end of the year on some of the, spending under some of these accounts for this time period in order to conserve our cash. I think that, that council has made, we, there were items that council swept earlier. We, almost $26 million, and then we reinstated two major road projects this year. But, but what, what I'm saying is that for this time period now, for this next three months and 20 days, that we could hold off on some of these projects, and then the city will survive, and we'll get through it, and it will help us from a cash perspective for the next 90, 110 days.
So, some of these projects are not, they're, they're purchases as well. I don't want anyone thinking we're talking about actual road projects or anything like that. They could be purchases.
Some of it could be a purchase. Some of it could be items that it's work on a facility that we're going to, to now suspend, and we won't do until we need to do that at the beginning of the year.
And so, someone mentioned about a household budget. When I tell my family that I have to cut the, the grocery budget, my grandson wants to know if he, if I'm going to cut Pop-Tarts. That's a legitimate question. He's, likes Pop-Tarts, and he wants to know if the budget cut means I'm going to cut Pop-Tarts. And so, if we're looking at it, someone like our household budget, um, I'd like to know if we're gonna cut the Pop-Tarts. So, I'm not suggesting that I won't vote in favor of this motion, but just as my household vote, budget, uh, I'm either gonna buy the generic, or I'm going to buy the, the, the organic. Uh, I just like to know. Thank you.
Thank you. I had, uh, Councilman Grab next.
Manager, uh, I really wanna support Councilor Euler on this. And I think many of us made it clear that we just wanted a list. Do you have staff in the building here that can bring that list as we continue with the discussion? It's, it shouldn't be that daunting.
No, Councilman, I don't, because what we're talking about is having to go through each and, in, one of those individual projects, and go through and identify which ones would be suspended and which ones don't. But we, what we gave you was a list of the projects and the spending to date. We did not get to go through this under the context of what the motion that Councilman Euler just made. So, that we don't have for you. We'd have to, we'd have to go through that and do that. It'll take us some time to do it.
Well, I, I really wanted to support him on this, but, um, I think that we need a little more detail on it, and I think we could probably all support it, especially, it doesn't appear like it's anything major. I mean, just, but I just don't wanna sign off on it until I know what's in it. Um, Councilor Euler, just so you know, if I would vote no on it, it's not because I wouldn't vote yes for it later. So, I don't know how time-sensitive it is.
Here, I guess, we'll have to answer the time sensitivity question, but I guess in part, that's why we delayed the last time, so that we could come to a resolution this time, and we're in the same place that we were two weeks ago.
Exactly, yeah.
It, it really is the, the direction of where the council wants to go with this. I mean, this is, this is an action you can take to, to freeze spending on, on these capital projects to conserve cash for the time being, or we can wait, and we can come back in two weeks, and we can talk about it then. It's just a matter of what does council wanna do.
Folks, we're burning cash. I don't know how many times we need to talk about it. We are burning cash. Every day we have this discussion, every day we say, "Let's talk about it in two weeks." We're burning it. We're burning cash. The manager said the motion would not prohibit his ability to do his job, and that it will help. The manager said it would help cash flow. It would help conserve cash. It's an emergency. You do it in your business, you do it in your home, and you do it in government. We know we're, this is an emergency situation. We're not cutting anything. We're delaying. We're conserving cash. Every businessperson listening to this out there would say, "Why didn't you do this in April?" It hurts. We don't know. We don't know. I have some information to share under New Business from the Health Department today. We don't know what's gonna happen with COVID going forward. We don't know what's going to happen with COVID going forward. It could get worse than it's been to date. I hope it doesn't. We're conserving cash.
Round three, Councilmember Moore.
Mr. Mayor, two weeks ago, I asked for a list. Tonight, what I got was a recrafted motion that admittedly I like better. Two weeks ago, I asked for a list. Had I gotten that tonight, I'd be prepared to vote on this motion that I like a lot better. So, I'm not trying to push off anything. I'm just asking for what I asked for two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And at the same time, I almost think like the motion, I'm like, you guys voted on it on, or should we say, we voted on it in item 20-227, maybe that's not the right one, I'm sorry, 20229, as we approve the declaration of local state emergency, which gives you and the city manager basically rights to manage the budget. So, at the same time, I just feel like we're creating another motion here as I just thought about that. Thank you.
Well, Councilman, I mean, part of the discussion is that declaration does give us the opportunity to do that, and in every instance since that first declaration in March, we have said, every opportunity that we have, we're going to come back to the council for those decisions. And so, that's why it's here tonight. We could have made an emergency declaration to stop all spending, and we probably would have taken a certain amount of criticism from people that said, "Well, why didn't you just bring it to the whole council? We're meeting almost every week." So, I mean, that's the reason it's here tonight. We're not taking advantage, the manager or I are taking advantage of the powers that we have when there's an emergency out there. We're bringing these items to the council for a full discussion. I'm not seeing any more lights. Is there any more input before we take the vote here? We have an amended motion in a second. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
The motion passes with nine ayes, two noes, voting no, Councilmembers Grab and Moore. Councilman Grab, did you have another item that you wanted to bring up under this?
Good luck to me on this one. Seems like if everybody just keeps an open mind, could you go over what we discussed this morning? We were talking about our credit line and what we approved before, doing a $10 million credit line.
So, Councilman Grab asked me if we were to increase the amount of borrowing that we did from $10 million to $20 million, what would that do to the proposed spending plan? And what would the impact of that be? And the issue is, you would be able to increase your borrowing if we're able to go out on the market and get that, and I think we would be, but it, and then what you would have to do, though, is with, as we had mentioned to you before, any kind of borrowing over the $10 million, we're going to have to have a repayment source. And at that level, you would be looking at probably a $2 million annual payment in order for us to repay that. So, that $2 million equates to about a 10-cent property tax increase if we don't have any other revenue growth. So, that's one option that the councilman wanted to look at in order to mitigate the need for longer-term or larger amounts of borrowing, or larger amounts of tax increases. But it would still, it would be debt that we would be incurring and that we could pay back. If the council then wanted to revisit the public safety reductions, there could be a way that you could absorb some of that in. I think it would provide additional cash for the city for the next couple of years, but it wouldn't be something long-term. As we look at these numbers up here, you're not going to be able to close a gap of $10.6 million in 2023. So, it might get you through 2022, but it's not going to get you much farther than that, so.
Manager, that was with not getting into our reserves, just doing the $20 million dollar...
Right, because in essence, what you're doing is you're borrowing that working cash, and you would be spending down that borrowed money.
Now, there are variations that we could do on this, but, you know, I'll tell everybody where I'm coming from. I don't want the engines cut. You know, I'm very displeased with the cuts we've already made in Public Works and our inability to expand our police department. We've got all kinds of bills around the corner, and a lot's going to depend upon how the economy responds, how the virus contagion evolves, on how much revenue comes in so we can pay that credit line down. Correct, manager, there are many things, Don Rumsfeld used to talk about, the unknowables. But it's conceivable that we could get through this year and much of next year with no property tax increase, and if the economy rebounds a nice W-shaped curve, we would not have to implement any more taxes on the people unless it didn't rebound, unless we had difficulty down the credit line. Is that right?
Any kind of borrowing that we would do, we could pledge additional revenues from our existing coffers if we have them, so that you wouldn't have to necessarily levy a property tax. We've done that with other borrowing that we've had in the past, but you have to have that revenue there. If it's not there, then you have to be prepared to know that you'll be issuing a property tax levy to support that.
Let me modulate that to $15 million from the $10 that we already passed.
Well, if you were to increase it by $5 million, I think we would need to make sure that as we build future budget years out, you're going to have to have a funding source to pay that $1.5 million a year coming back. I think we could absorb in our existing revenue growth, or at least as we rebound, $1 million a year for the $10 million issuance. Anything over that, though, I think we're going to have to start to set aside or at least plan in the budget to pay that back over time.
So, it's doable, but it depends on how optimistic or pessimistic we are, and we may be having to do a tax increase. We're trying to stave it off during this time of pandemic and still provide core basic services for our citizens. I think it's worth thought, careful thought. And it doesn't get into our reserves.
Depending, well, for the next couple of years. I think when you get out to 2023, and you've got a number that big that you have to cover, you're going to be digging into your reserves.
Let's say the virus really takes off, and, Mayor, we have, you know, more pressure on us to close things down again, and, you know, our economy really, really tanks. I don't know the future. Then it's going to be really hard for us not to do some type of tax increase, but at least we can go back to our constituents and say, "We tried this approach," feeling very confident that there'd be a W-shaped recovery. Our incomes coming up now, many of our revenue sources are rising more than we thought. I see that in the memo here. So, there is a good deal of faith that we're going to have this virus in the rearview mirror next year. I believe that. And I think this is a way of preventing much damage to our neighborhoods, not just in the area south of Ward Drive, but for everybody. And that's why I would like you to entertain this thought. I mean, obviously, if there's not six votes, then there isn't six votes, but I think it's worth some contemplation, and I appreciate the fact that we had a discussion item on fire protection and police protection tax. I think that was good, that we are cerebral enough to discuss these things, because we are in a jam. We are in a pandemic, and we want to do this with the least amount of pain. Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilman Grab, it's an interesting proposition. It's, we're seeing it at first blush. I don't want to get terribly parliamentary here, but why don't we all just think about that or ramifications of that? You talk to us, we'll talk to each other over the next two weeks. Maybe there is something there. I don't know, but I think a motion, an up or down motion tonight is premature. Would that be reasonable?
Yes, sir, it would be reasonable, and, yes, it would be reasonable.
Okay, anyone else? If not, Madam Clerk.
Did you want to do a receive-and-file motion on this, or?
Well, if you would like, I mean, we sent a direction back to the city manager that we would continue the discussion on this, so I think...
Okay, that's fine.
Corporation counsel, are you satisfied with that? Thank you.
20-198 is a request to consider adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to bodywork establishments.
Councilwoman Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm requesting one more deferral on this for two weeks. I've worked with Corporation Counsel Peterson and Director Black and staff, and we've come up with a good solution, we think, to the issues that first brought this forward and have a new proposal. We just want to give one of the stakeholders an opportunity to review it and give some input, and she's out of town without access to email until next Monday, so hopefully we can vote on this in two weeks.
Okay.
So, with that, I move to defer.
Motion to defer, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Discussion on the deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
If there's no further unfinished business?
Do we have anything unfinished? Unfinished, okay. Seeing none?
We're at new business.
New business has come before the council tonight. New business, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone that this coming Saturday at Martin Luther King Junior Park, there is going to be a census event where Tri-County Regional Planning and PCCO's Office of Census and Representative Jahan Gordon Booth is having an event at the park during the early afternoons between 11:00 and 2:00, I believe it is, where there will be food and fun and registering for the census and volunteering to go out and knock on doors. You may recall previously that I talked about PCCO was going to have something in their building on the 12th, and it was brought to my attention that the Tri-County Regional Planning needed to move their event from the 5th to the 12th. So, we decided to combine the events into one huge location, socially distant. Hand sanitizers will be available, masks will be required, but the point is, anyone in any part of the city, if you've not already registered for the census, you can come at that event and register there. There will be people with the Mondo pads or whatever those are called. Councilman Rut Regal would know best because he's our representative and hopefully speaks to this, but they would be able to take your information and make sure that you are counted. As I talked about previously, this census is going to determine the amount of federal dollars that comes back to this community for the next 10 years. That's a long time. And also, it's going to determine, based upon the complete census of the whole state and the region, how many representatives we will have. And so, this is very important. It doesn't cost anything. You don't have to drop anything in a mailbox. You don't have to touch anybody. Just come out on Saturday to Martin Luther King Junior Park. It's supposed to be a beautiful day, not too hot, it's not supposed to rain, and take part of the census. Thank you.
Thank you. I had Councilmember Seer next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for our, Mr. Manager, and I know I'm late on this request here, but, no, our hospitality industries have been hit, obviously, extremely hard. A few months ago in June, we gave them a little break and gave them two months to pay for their real estate taxes. Obviously, tomorrow is the deadline for your real estate taxes. Any consideration to eliminate fines or fees for late charges, or even, like I said, this is the night before, I don't know if we can even give them two months like we did in June just to pay their property taxes in September and October.
So, the property tax amnesty, or that was set up by the county treasurer? I mean, we could certainly reach out to them and ask them if they have anything planned for that, so. You bet.
I had Councilmember Jensen next.
Actually, this is a unfinished business or old business, but I have a follow-up. I've asked you a number of times about providing us with the list and more information about exploring, asking vendors for a voluntary reduction for the next year or two while we're going through the pandemic, so just following up and asking for that list.
The list of vendors is in the council budget packet. It's the report back, item number 11. It was the very first one, so it should be there for you.
Okay. I must not have gotten that in my packet.
We can circle back and talk about that at the next council meeting if you'd like, so.
Okay, thank you.
I had Councilmember Ali next.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier, you had mentioned that you had met with the Health Department. Are you able to share any update?
I am. I was just allowing everyone to get their new business out there before I did.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So, thank you for that. The city manager and I had a conversation with Monica Hendrickson from the Health Department this morning, along with County Board Chairman Rand and County Administrator Scott Sorrell. And the reason for the phone call discussion was to give the community a heads-up that right now as a region, we're not tracking in the right direction on COVID positivity. We're tracking right around 8%, and the trajectory is not going in the right direction. We are looking at potentially going to have some mitigation efforts placed on this region. We're in Region 2 now. There have already been two regions in the state who have been required to move back some of their timings and some of the opportunities for bars and restaurants to serve, as well as some other measures in terms of congregations, both indoors and outdoors and so on. My reason for bringing this forward, and you will be hearing more from this, is because we have an audience tonight, and it's important that people know that the trajectory in our region is not going in the right direction. A couple of things that I want to mention, and a couple of things that we can do. First of all, Director Henderson and her peers throughout the district are not seeing big issues in this region with restaurants over capacity. They're all doing a really good job. They're distancing, servers are wearing masks and everything else. In general, they're not having a lot of issues with bars, but bars are posing a big problem, both in some locations in our region and definitely statewide. The more opportunities for college students, the higher the opportunities have been to increase the transmission, and we're seeing that. So, we need to, a couple of things that were recommended. Private gatherings in your house, you know, this is just a big weekend for get-togethers, you know, it's a breeding ground for transmission. So, large gatherings, even in your home, off-campus parties, any large gatherings like that are very discouraged, as there's a big problem. Overcapacity at some bars. I don't, I haven't been to any of those, but they're happening. The manager and I, and the administrator and the county board chairman had a discussion about... about speaking with both the sheriff and Chief Marion about addressing those situations. If they see, in, in the course of patrol, if they see opportunities to make sure that they stop and address them. If you're sick, stay home. I mean, it sounds basic, but if some people are just assuming that it's just a sniffle or a cold, if you're sick, stay home. She recommends getting the flu vaccine, and she highly recommends people to get tested, as many people as can get tested as possible. More people testing will increase that denominator. Hopefully, the majority of those folks are, are not, and it'll lower that positivity rate. Again, you know, without calling out any other communities within our region, Peoria's doing pretty good. We, we're doing a, a pretty good job here. We also have a lot more testing available than any, almost any other community around. But that's kind of working against us, because not as many people are getting tested as supposed to, but I'm really appealing to the community. I know this is hard. Our, our restaurants are doing a great job, but they're also, they cannot survive at this level. They're getting by, but they can't survive. We need to keep them open. The majority of our bars are doing a good job, too. A few, a few bad apples are making it bad for everyone. So we just need to get that word out there, folks. We, we cannot, cannot take that step back. We, our businesses just can't support it. So, I, spread the word. Hopefully, we'll, we'll do that. If you haven't been tested and you have time, go get tested over on Glen Oak, at the, at the clinic on Glen Oak, also down here at the Civic Center, either place. And there's, is there another? Are those the two right now? Okay. So that's just an appeal to everyone, that we're on the verge, we're, we're not trending in the right direction, and we do not want to go back. So thank you to Monica Hendrickson at the Health Department for giving us that information this morning. Anyone else on new business? Madam Clerk.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council.
Okay, we have, we have several, we have a couple here, and I'm not sure if they're still here, and then we have quite a few that were sent into the clerk's office. So, in, in that place on Wisconsin, I'm sorry, it's Heartland Clinic on, on Wisconsin, that's the place to go get tested, or at the site, at the Civic Center. But we're going to do the people that are here first, and then we'll ask the clerk. So we just need names for the record. We have a five-minute speaking limit. I will, on, on all these, the clerk has to read. I will start the timer when she starts, and there'll still be a five-minute speaking limit, but you'll be speaking to all those. Up first is Terry Sally. Are they still here? Okay. Connie Abraham? Kelly Peterson? Okay.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Kelly Peterson. I live at seven twenty-four West Moss Avenue, here in Peoria. I believe that's the Second District. I'm here tonight on a couple issues, but a couple things came to my mind as I was listening to your deliberations tonight, too, and if I run out of time, maybe I'll come back next week, and we'll discuss those. There'd been, there's this lot on Main Street that is right next to the mobile gas station, if you guys are not familiar, kind of catty corner from Mr. G's, up by Church Mouse. This, this lot had been turned into a community garden-type thing. Well, there've been a lot of criticism over the last week about our Second District Councilman, Chuck Grab, and, because he was receiving some complaints about the nuisance of this lot. There's people that were camping, I mean, literally camping, pop tents in this lot. Every single day, at least six or eight people up there drinking, bunch of hypodermic needles. You could not go to this gas station without being accosted by one or two of the people in this lot for money. My daughter was approached by some unsavory characters. My eleven-year-old son and I witnessed a woman, probably in her seventies, defecating next to the building. I took a picture of that and sent it to Mr. Councilman Grab. I'm not sure of what the issue is. While there was so much flack, I don't know the backstory about how this lot became a public garden, or whatever it was. I'm sure it served a purpose and fed some people. However, it turned into a gathering spot for some unsavory characters that were really diminishing our neighborhood. This is about, I don't know, half a block, three, three-quarters of a block, two blocks away from my house, the way a crow flies. There's a gentleman that would approach you, and if you didn't give him money, he would get very, very upset. I think he even talked about my mother once. I mean, he was really, really furious. And if it was my wife or daughter that would went there and got approached by this gentleman, they would have been afraid. This guy, he's out in the middle of the Main Street, he's out in the middle of Sheridan Street. He wears a high-vis jacket with a hat in his hand, banging literally on car windows, panhandling and asking for money. I remember when this area was the place to be in Peoria, Moss Avenue, High Street. I'm a lifelong Peorian, grew up the south side of Peoria, graduated from manual, and I remember driving down Moss Street and just taking it all, what this neighborhood was at the time, and it still is a beautiful neighborhood. However, what's going on today is really, really causing a problem with our neighborhood. So my hats off to the councilmen in the city for stepping up and cleaning this lot up. That's what the issue was, that people were, I guess, weren't informed that this lot was going to be cleaned up, and that they hadn't had an opportunity to weigh in on this. They used the excuse that they hadn't been keeping this lot up this year because of the, the COVID pandemic, and I can certainly appreciate that. However, there has been several opportunities since the pandemic. We've learned a lot. People are out. There are precautions that have been taken, and this lot could have been brought up to speed. People run off the lot, and so on. So to say that this lot was serving a purpose to this point would be very, very misguided. So I wanted to mention that. I want to show my support for the councilmen in getting this lot cleaned up. There's no trespassing signs there. I believe the city helped clean this lot up. But the, the last thing I want to talk about tonight is the panhandling going on in our city. You can't go to an intersection in this city where there's high traffic, that there isn't two, three, four people panhandling, using signs so they're not approaching your car and they're staying within our ordinance. But I'm encouraging you guys to come together as a body and find some way that we can save, not encroach upon people's civil liberties, freedom of speech, but to get these folks off the, off the lot. I know for a fact, a lot of these guys live in the Hope Apartments down there. They're not homeless. They take turns, there's shifts, and some of them will panhandle, go sit down and drink while the other ones come up and do it. So please, address that for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Appreciate you being mindful of our speaking limit as well. Everyone knows that typically we don't respond, this isn't Q and A, this is an opportunity for us to listen, and that's what we do. In regards to the last request on, on the panhandling, I will ask the Corporation Counsel to make sure that in this week's information that comes out from the manager and city manager, that we remind people that there have been rulings from the Supreme Court that really restrict our ability to do that, but we'll, that's a very frequent complaint that we get, and we'll get the information out about that. So that's all the in-person we have, and we have another twenty to go. So, Councilmember, or, I'm sorry, Clerk Ball, you will, you will read them, and I'll just let you know if any of them go beyond five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. The first one is from Colin Kraus. I am a constituent and long citizen of Peoria who is deeply concerned for the community in this time of national instability. With such instability at the federal level, it would be ideal for citizens of Peoria to have faith and trust in governmental institutions that exist in our localities. As demonstrated in regards to the community garden on Main Street, this is unfortunately not the case. It is my intent with this public comment for the city council meeting to express my feelings in regards to the community garden on Main Street and how the homeless population has been treated by Councilmember Grab and the city of Peoria. It is my understanding that Councilmember Grab's position on the lot is that the garden was falling into a state of disrepair. Homeless individuals were using it as a location to use the restroom, gather, drink alcohol, and participate in the consumption of illicit substances. Councilmember Grab apparently views this behavior as an adherence to the community's sought to, and sought to take action, the only way he knew how, removing the garden. It is also my understanding that the property owner has expressed his desire to expand his business to the adjacent lot next to his current gas station where the garden was located. I do not take issue with the property owner's desire to use his property as he sees fit, but when reflecting on the methods of the city used to go about the process, several issues and questions came to mind. The lot is private property. Why is the city of Peoria so directly involved with the raising of the garden? Is it not the job of the person who owns the property to maintain it? If a private property is overrun and requires desperate upkeep, it is the city of Peoria's process typically to provide the owner with a notice of abatement, asking them to maintain their own property, or fines and further zoning enforcement will occur. Is this the process that is typically used? Why was this process not applied for the property on Main Street? In what regards do you believe the raising of the community garden will benefit the homeless community and aid those facing housing and food crisis in the Peoria area? Simply removing the garden, any place for homeless people to gather, will not achieve victory over these issues, nor remove them from the community. These individuals will find other locations to gather, garden or not, is an empty lot on a busy street near to downtown, next to a gas station, across from a liquor store, and in the heart of a low-income area that has been a victim of gentrification. Although it seems easy to view people who use the restroom in public and leave paraphernalia of their drug use in public areas as vagrants, I want to remind Councilmember Grab that these people are not choosing to put themselves in this situation. They are the victims of abuse, generational oppression, systematic inequity, and many suffer themselves in this situation from mental illnesses. Drug abuse and addiction specialists have pointed out time and time again that substance abuse such as this should be seen as a mental health issue and should be looked at as a public health crisis, not a concern of law enforcement. These people are homeless and have limited options for housing or locations to use a restroom. What is the city doing to provide refuge and a location to use the restroom for these individuals? Councilmember Grab seems disgusted by these people using the garden for these purposes, but the city hasn't left them with any alternatives. If there is a public restroom, homeless people would surely not need to use location for a restroom in the first place. In Councilmember Grab's public statement, he seems to call out local charitable organizations for not doing enough and incapable of organizing properly to maintain the garden. If our local government were providing the community and poverty with enough resources and aids, these types of organization and nonprofits should ideally not have to exist to begin with. They are filling in the gaps where the city of Peoria is unable or unwilling to help. I find it slightly offensive that Councilmember Grab calls these groups when they are, calls out these groups when they are working not-for-profit and seeking improvement of our community. I believe Councilmember Grab shares the goals of improving the community with these organizations, but Councilmember Grab is a paid employee of the Peoria's tax-paying residents. His civic duty is to protect and serve the community he represents. And I believe I'm out of time on that one, so. The next one is from Conrad Stinnett. Dear members of the Peoria City Council, the Renaissance Park Community Garden was originally an asset to the West Bluff. It was an oasis of tranquility in a dynamic urban area. The efforts of the Renaissance Park Community Association were supported by the West Bluff neighborhoods, and their work in maintaining the small park is, was appreciated. Unfortunately, the RPCA interest in maintaining the space has seemingly waned, causing the space to revert from being beneficial to becoming a major detriment to the area. In addition to litter and weeds, the space became a crash site for homeless people, who added their own unique challenges to the area. As a community, we must aid the homeless. While there are many local organizations and resources to aid the homeless in an effective manner, the community garden was not one of these. While the situation is sad, and there would, could, probably could have been better communication all around, the actions of the owner of the property to retake control of this land was appropriate. The situation was out of hand, and fortunately, something needed to be done. I am pleased to learn that the RPCA is still active. I encourage the RPCA to renew their mission and to seek new garden site where the original spirit of their effort can be more fully realized. The next one is from Nicole Livesey. On this Labor Day, we honor the labors that organized and gave their time and energies to make a better America for American workers. A more perfect union is an ambitious, ambitious goal that works. Volunteers and movement leaders pull us towards with every generation. It is in this endeavor that the current and founding boards of Peoria Proud have come together on a statement of admonishment of the city of Peoria and Second District City Council members' actions taken against the residents of our city experiencing homelessness, and the volunteers and the works of community organizations dedicated to supporting them. And they have attached a letter of admonishment from the founding and current boards of Peoria Proud. This one is from Marcella Tuplets. Preserving a vacant lot on West Main Street as a public toilet is not now or never will be a step in the continued improvement of our beautiful West Bluff. I applaud the new owner of the property at the intersection of Sheridan and Main for his commitment to a new gas station. Looking forward to the construction, a big thanks to Second District Councilmember Grab for his hard work on this and many other projects. The Second District is not faint for the faint of heart, as we both know too well. And she is the former Second District Council Representative. Kelly Fidler is, dear city council, I'd like to address the raising of Renaissance Park Community Garden. It has been said the garden was raised to rid the area of homeless. It's been said the homeless urinating and defecating in the lot is offensive. I'd like to ask, where are the homeless citizens of Peoria supposed to use the restroom now that no public restrooms are available? Other cities similar in size and demographic to ours have put porta-potties in areas where homeless are known to be, and public sinks for hand washing to help prevent the spread of disease, but not Peoria. In fact, other cities similar to Peoria's demographic have city-funded programs to help homeless people, but not Peoria. Their area at Mobile Gas Station has not improved since the removal of the park. It's gotten worse. And this one is anonymous. I'm outraged over the destruction of the Renaissance Park Community Garden on Main Street. Councilmember Grab knew about this and refused to even warn the community beforehand. Was this to stifle resistance? How much more is the Peoria City Council not telling us? The Renaissance Park Community Garden has a spot for homeless people to find food and seek shelter and safety. As a homeless person, I find the lack of access to healthy food in Peoria outrageous, and now this council is supporting the destruction of a community garden in order to protect the property of a pollutive gas station. Wouldn't it have been less time and resource-consuming to mobilize some volunteers to clean the garden up? Is this really how we end food deserts in Peoria? Is this how homelessness is stopped, by destroying a- Is this how homelessness is stopped, by destroying a local, relied upon source of healthy food for homeless people? Peoria needs to do better. Vicky Hibbard writes, "When the garden first started, I thought that it was a good idea and decided to volunteer. I walked over, and it was in disarray. No one could tell me who was in charge, what time I should come to work, or what was to be done to get the garden up and running. I decided after one time that was not how I wanted to spend my day off. A year later, my neighbor told me there were free flowers at the garden. When I arrived, there was a plastic container full of half-dead flowers barely hanging on by a vine. I loaded up my car and tried to salvage and plant as many as I could, but barely any survived. I thought this was certainly, again, a wasted, disorganized venture, especially if someone had donated all the plants. I attended a few events at the park, a concert, a film festival that several of my Airbnb guests were involved in. I stayed until I saw my guests perform or their film was shown. The place was swarming with bees and mosquitoes, and event organizers discouraged people from using poison to spray the mosquitoes. While I was there, I witnessed drugs and a few people going behind the bushes to go to the bathroom. I left as soon as possible. Over the years, I have passed by shaking my head to the disarray of the property and how it has been a haven for homeless people. One man seems to live there and will go out into the street between cars and yell at passerby's. I support the gas station owners for bulldozing down the place in order to build a new venue. I also applaud Councilmember Grab for his hard work in working on improving West Main Street. As many things, the thought may have been good in the beginning, but unless someone knows how to organize this type of venture, it becomes just another eyesore and goes down the tubes. I understand that people are protesting, and I say that they had their time to prove they could make something of the lot, and they were unable to do it. To me, it is just another means for a bunch of angry individuals to complain about something they have no control over." The next one is Jackie Armich. I have lived in Peoria since 2004. I have resided most of those years within District Two, both while renting and now as a homeowner. Throughout the years, I have enjoyed seeing the growth and development in this area of the city. This is a place that I am proud to call home. I can't imagine living in any other part of the city. With that said, I was shocked to see that the community garden in Renaissance Park was razed last week. There have been many different viewpoints going around about why this was done. While I understand that perhaps the owner of the land did not want it to be used anymore, it baffles me to know that not a single member of the Renaissance Park Community Association was contacted prior to this change taking place. I am also aware that there was an encampment of homeless folks using the garden prior to its demise. Rather than working on a solution to help these folks out, a garden was torn down. Please help me to understand how this makes one bit of sense. Our Second District Councilperson said he would not support a garden filled with trash and weeds. Unfortunately, there are many other public and private spaces in District Two that are filled with just that. It has been a few days since the garden was razed. Take a drive-by, and you will find it is littered with garbage, and the neighboring building has been subjected to graffiti. Second District residents deserve better." Adam Gasper writes that, "Regarding the raising of the Renaissance Park Community Garden, as a West Bluff District Two resident for the past seven years, I am heartbroken and appalled at how the destruction of this community-built space was handled. Giving no notice to the volunteer not-for-profit organization that runs it was totally disrespectful and the second-largest source of outrage regarding this. The first being the blatant attack on our most marginalized and helpless citizens, the homeless population. Some leaked emails show that this was, in fact, the reason this community space was destroyed. The city should be working with the volunteer not-for-profit organizations such as Jolt and Lula to help these people in need rather than make their lives harder." To Councilmember Chuck Grab, "At one point of living here, I greatly respected you and thought you had the best interests of all your constituents at heart. After this ordeal, I now see that I was mistaken, and you base your decisions on rich people that have your ear." Paul Day of Peoria, "This has been a groundswell of outrage over the destruction of Renaissance Park Garden on Main Street. Much of this outrage is from people who do not know the whole story, and many who do not live in the area or even in Peoria. As Second District resident who lives six blocks away and passes the site daily, I want to thank the city for removing this eyesore in problem area. While the garden was a great idea and effective in its inception ten years ago, volunteer support fell off increasingly, and this year, nothing was planted and no weeding was done. I have personally witnessed drug usage and public urination at the site. Those outraged over the removal of this eyesore have not once stopped to thank the owner, who for an entire decade graciously allowed his privately-owned property to be used for this purpose. I would like to publicly thank him for his gift. I also wish the new owners well in the expansion of the mobile station. That expansion will allow for increased food options for residents of the area. It's regrettable that Councilmember Grab has been subjected to obscene and vicious attacks on this issue when his only arguable lapse was perhaps inadequate communication. He continues to be an excellent advocate and representative for the Second District residents, for Main Street businesses, and for the City of Peoria." Andrea Render, "When I learned about the destruction of the community garden, I was devastated. Many questions flooded my mind, including, how will these people eat? Where will these people of Peoria go to survive? Why was one of the limited sources of food in a food desert destroyed? It may look like a plot of land for those of us who are fortunate to have access to food and produce, but to others, this was a part of their home. I have had the privilege to speak to those who took part in creating the garden. It was troubling to hear about all the resources that were previously given to people in our community on these grounds. They provided medical care, counseling services, supplies to those in need. There may be other shelters and places for people to live, but where do they go when they aren't able to go back there? As a community of people and leaders, you have the power to make decisions for those who don't have the opportunity to make choices for themselves anymore. One thing we can do is give these people a safe place and help those before they have to resort to life on the streets." Mike Dugard, "I would like the council to find appropriate garden space in the West Bluff for neighbors and neighborhoods in the area. That could be a project spearheaded by residents and others who wish to supply produce for those in need. Let's look ahead to that challenge and community effort and stop the backbiting and insulting comments that harm and don't further the interests of our citizens. All of us in the Second District are grateful to the businesses that support us and to Councilmember Grab, whose hard work makes our part of the city a great place to live." Sean Kritz writes, "As a lifelong Illinoisan and lifelong citizen of Peoria, the destruction of the Renaissance Park Community Garden was very upsetting to me. The way this was carried out quickly with no communication with those who tended to it, and with disregard for the work put into it, as well as the art and structures that were destroyed, clearly demonstrates that the act was done without integrity. Those that hide behind the legality of the act show a lack of empathy for those who tended to it and those who benefited from it. The excuses used were flimsy and have been disproven mere days after the bulldozing, as trash and graffiti have magically reappeared as if nothing ever happened. Perhaps we should bulldoze all of Peoria if that is the only way our culture and government can think of to deal with litter and public urination." Sheila Stokowski is... Let's see here. "On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Peoria Proud Board of Directors, I submit this public comment sent by the current and founding boards to city leadership on Monday, September 7th, regarding our concerns on how the city's actions regarding the Renaissance Park Community Garden and how it reflects poorly the way in which the city will handle the forthcoming eviction crisis post-COVID-19. On this Labor Day, we honor the labors that organized and gave their time and energies to make a better America for American workers. A more perfect union and an ambitious goal that works. Volunteers and movement leaders pull us towards with every generation. It is this endeavor that the current and founding boards of Peoria Proud have come together on a statement of admonishment of the City of Peoria and Second District Councilmember Grab, action taken against the residents of our city experiencing homelessness, and the volunteers and works of community organizations dedicated to supporting them. In the early years of the formation of Peoria Proud, Peoria was experiencing a sort of renaissance as a new generation of community-minded leaders interested in the arts, community service, and human rights came together to fill gaps in our city's tapestry. Peoria Proud's founders invested much of their time and energy and resources, not only in the creation of this institution, but also in initiatives such as the Whiskey City Collaborative by Peoria and the Renaissance Park Community Association. Renaissance Park, which includes the corridor of West Main Street in Peoria's West Bluff and the surrounding neighborhoods, has been a central part of Peoria Proud's history. It is home to a diverse community filled with LBTQ and residents, business owners, allies, and supporters. The very bylaws of this organization and many others were written in neighborhood coffee shops and bars like the former bar Blue. Many of our events and community service projects have been held on Main Street. We are committed to maintaining these relationships and the support of this community of dedicated residents and volunteers. The Peoria Proud Board was devastated to hear of the sudden, unannounced removal of the Renaissance Park Community Garden and the subsequent demeaning remarks about the volunteers and residents of this community from the district's council member. In this time of unprecedented global pandemic, volunteer and nonprofit organizations are, like all of us, forced to learn and adapt our ways to fit a new reality. The City of Peoria's claims that the garden had been abandoned and blighted are not true. As noted in an email obtained by Change Peoria, and such misconceptions could have and should have been cleared up with direct communication with its constituents. The garden was utilized by many in our community, including people who are currently experiencing homelessness. The city maintains that such use created a negative impact on the community and uses this claim as additional justification for the garden's removal. We believe this is an inhumane and cruel response levied against some of our community's most vulnerable members. Removing a community garden, a source of free fresh produce located in a food desert, instead of relocating it, is unacceptable. We call on the City of Peoria to address the root issues of homelessness and addiction and to end the scapegoating of hard-working and struggling residents and volunteers as a cover for the municipal government's own shortcomings. Lastly, we call on Second District Councilmember Grab to issue a formal and public apology to all businesses, organizations, and volunteers that have worked selflessly to maintain the West Main corridor for the past decade." Randall Anderson Maxwell writes, "I wish to thank the City of Peoria for the recent action taken at Renaissance Park located on Main near Sheridan. Last fall, my family bought a home two blocks from that location, and I drive or walk past it every day. Renaissance Park is a wonderful, romantic idea of fresh food, art, performance space. However, the reality of the Renaissance Park is simply a nightmare. It was completely unmanaged, overgrown, and weed-infested. I personally witnessed constant violations of CDC guidelines, public urination, and drug deals on that property. It has been a center for criminal activity in this area. Whoever was managing that space abandoned it long ago, leaving it to rot. Closing the park was not only the correct action, but a necessary step in securing the health and safety of our neighborhood." Jessica Benassi states that in 2009, her husband James and herself purchased a business at the 600 block of West Main. While there, they hosted the monthly community cleanups, helped to fund and build a community garden across the street, allowing anyone who asked to use their bathroom. And they were founding members of the Renaissance Park Community Association. RPCA was founded specifically to care for the garden on West Main and to help care for the neighborhood. She was proud to serve as president of the organization for nearly five years. Unfortunately, she had the nerve to ask too many questions of her councilperson and made too many waves. The treatment that was received by the councilmember after that point was so poor and so destructive that it was instrumental in our decision to close our business. It is laughable to me that Councilmember Grab would now claim his willingness to work with RPCA if they are just somehow better. I committed countless hours to my community on West Main. While I was there, in return, Councilmember Grab made it clear that he barely tolerated me, and he was not interested in working with the community members who were economically disadvantaged, people who asked questions about his decisions or in helping the more vulnerable members of the population. He was only interested in taking credit for things he did not do and appeasing the deeper pockets in his district. I look forward to seeing him voted out of the next election. However, he is not the only problem. We know from multiple sources that the homeless community in Peoria is being targeted. Yes, the population is growing. Sometimes, members of the population can be disruptive, but homelessness is complex and multilayered, and there are no simple solutions. If there were, we wouldn't be in this position. I would ask that as the city looks for solutions to the epidemic of homelessness, that they continue to reach out to people who are working on the street seven days a week, who know the community well and the challenges that they face, and they are doing their best to find compassionate solutions during a pandemic and economic downturn." Teresa Lansbury writes, "The city contracted last week to have the Renaissance Park Community Garden removed without notifying anyone in the community. In the upside-down thinking of our city leaders, the garden was the cause of drug-dealing, public urination, and litter. In response to the neighborhood outrage, Councilmember Grab and the City of Peoria doubled down in their press releases on their decision to destroy with no notice, attempting to shift attention to the private property owner and maligning the Renaissance Park Community Association instead of taking responsibility for their part in the hiatus action. The act of destroying the garden was a move of blatant contempt for the people that live in the West Main Street area and to work to make it a diverse and welcoming place. Our own misnamed Community Development Department broke trust with us. The broken-window theory illustrates one small and sometimes disputed aspect of the complex problem of crime. Community development has weaponized the broken-window theory against the city-centered neighborhoods and filled their coffers in the process. Their attack on the garden shows the city's complete inability to recognize and support the things that make a neighborhood thriving and beautiful. Councilmember Grab has sown wind around Second District long enough. Come April, he will reap the whirlwind. My more immediate concern is that we, the people, have no direct control over city staff. We rely on the city manager to do what is right. I am asking for a public apology to be issued to the people on West Main Street and a formal reprimand to be directed into the Community Development Director Black's file for his part in the debacle." This will not erase what was done. It would simply be a basic first step toward taking responsibility for the city's action and opening up the possibility of earning a working relationship with the community at some point in the future. Liz Scoville, good evening, Peoria City Council. I am commenting on the recent raising of the West Peoria Community Garden maintained by the Renaissance Park Community Association. I am sure I have a number of friends and colleagues also writing to express their displeasure with how the raising was done and the long-term damage that will come from it, particularly for our homeless community who saw the garden as a safe place for rest and the receipt of resources by volunteers. So to avoid the risk of being redundant, I will not address that here, nor will I suggest that alternative actions for helping Peoria's displaced and homeless could have been, still can be done. What I would like to comment on is the bigger picture, what this action shows us about the council, particularly Councilmember Graeb. Let's get theatrical for a moment. Let's say Councilmember Graeb and the people he has conferred with on the issue are right. The garden was a mess, weeds, no food growing, trash, and feces everywhere. Let's pretend that the advocates for the garden are lying about its upkeep, and it is true that the garden became a real eyesore, smell sore, and the hub of criminal activity. Your solution to this issue was to be absolute, get rid of it, no collaboration, no outreach, just destruction. And that solution is indicative of your possible and likely underlying intentions. Let the people with money have their land so they can make more money for your district. Displace the homeless who felt safe there and point them to full shelters and exhausted resources before walking away and not looking back. Turn a cold shoulder to those who started and maintain the garden with not a single attempt at reaching out for a warning or viable alternative. What this says to us, who care for people more than profit, is that anyone without money has no say, and anyone with money is stated without hesitation. You will raise sentimental value and community effort to the ground to usher in more wealth, inequality, and put a Band-Aid on the gushing wound experienced by Peoria's most needy. What I implore you to ask yourself, how is that representative of the Peoria community? How is that putting all of your district's constituents first? How is that a respectful use of power by a person who has sworn to serve all, not just some? From this Peoria citizen's point of view, no matter what the state of the garden was, you're still in the wrong. Your doubling down on how you handled the situation is disregard for the needs and efforts of your fellow people and a disgusting show of immorality, privilege, and power. And I won't even go into the public statements you've made that are a complete contradiction to what you've said in private about the situation. I've seen the screenshots. They confirm my above analysis of the situation, that your intentions are not rooted in good If the rest of the council are willing to do that to something truly valued as a genuinely helpful community garden, and what else will you do with that? How much more abuse of power and preference for wealth do we stand to witness, both in Second District and the entire city? That's what a lot of us are asking ourselves, and I hope you keep this in mind the next time you put business expansion and erasure of real human issues above your entire committee and every person in it. Hannah Ramlow is a resident of Second District, and like many of her neighbors, she's appalled at the way in which the community garden removal was handed by the councilmember and the city. The garden was an example of true grassroots community engagement that only one year ago, the city lauded by recognizing Renaissance Park Community Association in council chambers. Though myself and my community are still grieving at the loss of the garden, I am writing to talk about the future. I ask council and city staff to deeply consider how to speak and act emphatically in regards to our city's unhoused population. These are people, not problems to be dealt with. It is imperative that these working with unhoused individuals are brought into the fold when discussing solutions. It has been suggested recently that the city manager has invited restaurant and bar owners together to discuss the issue of panhandling. Discussing these issues without representation from those working directly with individuals who are living on the streets is futile. I urge council to look for ways to increase the amount of quality, dignified, affordable housing options in our city. Removal of a haven for individuals facing homelessness is simply displacement. And since no organization working directly with those individuals was notified, they are now experiencing a lapse in care, food, and medical support. We need to look to housing-first models that don't discriminate based on histories of substance abuse or abuse. Cities that have done so have found an increase in participants' overall health, as well as financial savings due to less use of public funds such as Medicaid, jail time, police calls, and ER visits. The raising of the garden was a rash decision that reveals the councilmember's lack of empathy. His statement and continued dialogue after the fact revealed his lack of emotional intelligence and inability to take responsibility for his actions. Community members of the Second District won't continue to stand by while the city attempts to cover up the real issue of homelessness with thoughtless Band-Aid solutions.
Madam Clerk? I know we still have more to go, but you've been going nonstop for literally forty minutes, so I would implore you to take a drink of water. I don't know if you have anything else over there.
And a breath.
And a breath. This is probably the first time in the history of Peoria that we've had the clerk read a lot of citizens to address, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
There's four more, so, okay. Okay, council members, I would like to address the council in regards to the Main Street Quarter. First, I commend the city officials and those on the council who are fighting to improve this important part of our city. Many improvements have been made, and more needs to be done. The idea that the vacant lot near the corner of Main and Sheridan was a vibrant food basket for the neighborhood and the homeless is a stretch of imagination. Where it once may have been a center for wholesome activity, it became an eyesore and a nuisance property, a place where rowdy groups would sometimes spill into the street, a place where tall weeds grew and trash and human waste could be found. This corner desperately needs this redevelopment to happen. Last Saturday, a group of people sat in the dirt feeling good about themselves because they were protesting for who they perceive as victims. Understand that we who live in this area are the victims of their actions and this nuisance property, and that was from Rick Burdette. Anthony Wallraven, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council, I am writing to you for two reasons. The first is to record my dismay at the recent decision to cut two fire engines and their accompanying firefighter staff from the city budget. At least one councilmember commented that it was up to them to make the, quote, "tough decisions." I fail to see how simply doing what the city has done for past years is a tough decision. The tough decision would be to say we are not going to try to balance our city's budget on the backs of decreased public services for the citizens of Peoria and decreased safety for our firefighters and our citizens. It seems that we have been caught up in a never-ending spiral of service cuts and budget deficits for years, and many of the same people that sit on this council have only one solution in that intervening time. Use those budget cuts as a way to demonize public employees and lay them off. Peoria does have real issues, but they aren't going to be solved when people think, quote, "tough decisions" is to do what has always been done. I urge the city to attempt to find progressive ways to raise revenue so that working and middle-class Peorians who are taxed high aren't asked to pay for this in either reduced services or higher taxes. Secondly, one of the main things that almost all politically active Peorians agree on is that we have to stop out migration of Peorians to other places, particularly younger people. While we all have different reasons for why we think this is happening, I think the events revolving around the West Main Community Garden last week highlight at least one of them. While it may very well be that since the lot was privately owned, there was little that could be done to save it once the owner decided on his own course of action. There are a great many people in that neighborhood who feel that there was no communication between them and the city, especially when it appears that this course of action had been discussed for some time. One can easily go on social media and see that the garden was maintained until at least May of this year, and with a pandemic affecting the city, there were no events there during the summer as there had been every year during 2019. Some of the people may very well leave Peoria for economic reasons. Some people may leave because they go away to college, and lots of people never come back once they leave. But I think a lot of people in Peoria leave because when they try to do something, they are stymied at every turn by a system that is only responsive to a few people. The citizens of the Neighborhood Association responsible for this garden weren't reached out to, while the councilmember in question cites people from a different Neighborhood Association as complainants. Small business owners are either on the side of the garden that they have stated they disagree with the decision, yet small business owners are cited as complainants. As a lifelong Peorian resident of Second District and friend to many of the people who have been hurt by this decision, I have to ask which people are being listened to in the Second District? Danette Rumsey, to whom it may concern, I have owned a business on West Main for six years. I have also been helping with the community garden for six years. This garden has been a place for the neighborhood to gather, sharing art, food, books, community spirit, and so much more. The garden has been praised many times by our district councilmember who all of a sudden during a pandemic saw it as an eyesore. Without any contact to the Renaissance Park Community Association, Mr. Graeb had it bulldozed. He then puts up a public statement about, which has since been taken down and footed social media with untruths. This is not the kind of leadership I am looking for in my district. He has also sent some interesting emails. Please consider stepping down, Councilmember Graeb. And the last one is from Chris Schaffner. I am writing as a concerned citizen, as someone who works in Peoria about the recent raising of a Renaissance Park garden. I understand the desire for redevelopment, and I'm not opposed to that so long as it's done with transparency, integrity, and being ethical. It should also be done in such a way as to not erase the culture that preexisted the new development. None of the above was done by Councilmember Graeb. He intentionally deceived the stakeholders of the community. It was later discovered through various emails and public comments on social media that his intention was to collaborate with other city employees and local businesses to raise the garden and displace those who are living and unsheltered in the garden. Councilmember Graeb made it abundantly clear that he places his priority on the interest of business owners and though in the Moss Bradley area, have had the most vulnerable and marginalized in our community. This is unfitting of an elected official. Homelessness is complex and multifaceted, and to think you can displace an individual or individuals without coordinated care and support is irremediable. The individuals living in the park were receiving daily care and support by a variety of agencies, including direct medical care from Dr. Mary Staple and the OSF Street Medicine Team, in conjunction with the Jolt Harm Reduction Services to address ongoing substance issues. The displacement of this encampment not only goes against CDC COVID recommendations, it scatters these folks from accessing the services listed above, and it is now harder to work towards permanent housing and better health outcomes as a result of their displacement. A simple phone call to any of the service providers could have expressed this and worked to coordinate follow-up. He should be ashamed, and so should his constituents. It is my opinion that Councilmember Graeb should vacate his current seat for District Two. He has demonstrated an elitist and does not have the best interest of all District Two at heart. And that completes our list of write-ins this evening, and I can now take a breath, and we have no executive session, so we would be adjourned.
Thank you. We have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Ruck Regal and seconded by Councilmember Ali. Seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22, and this council meeting is adjourned.